Sound, 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 are we on, okay. Call this meeting of the Urbana City Council meeting as a committee of the whole to water. In, oh, excuse me, we'll have a roll call first.
Members of the committee, Chenoweth.
President.
Hayes.
President.
Huth.
Here.
Otto.
Here.
Pat.
President.
Wyman.
Here.
Chair Saturthwaite.
Here.
God. Are there any additions to the agenda? No?
No, sir.
We need a staff report. Oh, excuse me, Carl.
One thing I'd like to read, proclamation. Many of you know probably that the Boneyard Arts Festival weekend will be this weekend, and I've got a proclamation for the occasion. It reads, whereas arts, culture, and entertainment enrich the quality of life in Champaign County, and whereas multidisciplinary arts are supported and valued by the citizens of Champaign County, and whereas Forty North Eighty-Eight West was formed in 2002 to promote and support art, culture, and entertainment, and whereas the cities of Champaign and Urbana have celebrated the arts and have focused attention on the value of arts in our lives, and whereas the annual Boneyard Arts Festival plays a vital role in bringing the arts and entertainment to our citizenry, now therefore we, Jerry Schwiheart, Mayor of Champaign, and I, Todd Saturthwaite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby declare April sixteenth through nineteenth two thousand and four as Boneyard Arts Festival Weekend in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois. And we have a couple people to tell us a little bit more about the Arts Festival.
Forty North Eighty-Eight West, the Champaign County Arts, Culture, and Entertainment Council. And on behalf of the council and as a member of the Boneyard Arts Festival Two Thousand and Four Planning Committee, I'd like to accept the proclamation from Mayor Saturthwaite and the fellow council members. In addition, I'd like to thank you and the businesses and artists that comprise the city of Urbana for their continued support of the Boneyard Arts Festival. Beside me, I have Kathy Larson, fellow board member and fellow county.
I just want to mention that we put a copy of the poster for each of you and a copy of the promotional disc, and there will also be T-shirts for sale and more promotions as the week goes on, so, thank you.
Okay, and I take it members of public will be able to find out more about this through the newspapers, website?
Yes, and the website is fortynorth.org.
Fortynorth.org is the website, okay. So if you want information about the Boneyards Arts Festival, why, that's the place to go. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
That certainly is a catchy name, isn't it? Boneyard Arts Festival. It's due. It certainly is due. It happens, it's these like this. The minutes of the previous meeting, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any additions or deletions? I have a correcto on page three. It calls down in the, oh, two-thirds of the way down, it says ordinance number such-and-such on Busy Avenue. It's, we don't have that.
It is pretty busy.
Any further additions or deletions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's approved. The public, from the public, and I would remind folks who will speak to us not to extend your remarks past five minutes. That is what we politely allow and request from you. And we have Bob Cook here to speak regarding the approval of the annual act.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in support of the recommendation for the annual action plan oh-four, oh-five for the home monies. Just to thank the staff also for their time, that they've, I'm representing the Ecological Construction Laboratory. We are hoping to become a new low-income housing developer in the city of Urbana, and specifically, we're looking to do low, implements sustainable design for high energy efficiency. And so I'm just come to speak in support of the annual action plan, and if you have any questions, you can ask me.
On your request, Bob, you said that you'd wish to address the committee at the time the agenda item is presented?
This is fine, though.
This is?
That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Right now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah. What's the name of your organization again?
The organization's named Ecological Construction Laboratory.
Okay, thanks.
Next, Drain and Kathy, well, oh, we just had that, excuse me, for the Boneyard Arts Next, we have Cope Comston, who would like to speak on the impact of the District One-Sixteen Children of Lakeside Terrace. Cope.
I'm Cope Comston, I live at four-oh-two West Nevada, and I'm here as a member of the Board of Education, I'm on the Board of Education, but I just wanted to make you aware that in Lakeside Terrace now, there are eighty-eight children who are attending Urbana schools, and whatever plans for redevelopment are for the families who live there now is going to have a big impact on these students. We know that low-income students in the district are at a much greater, having problems for difficulties with achievement, difficulties with behavior and discipline, and the data show that students who are moved during their time have much greater problems with things like this. We know that when students start early in Urbana and go through and are able to stay in the same school and have stability, that they do much better. So this is a large number of students, and I just wanted to be sure that you are, that whatever plans you have for how much low-income replacement housing there will be, that these families can afford, in the Lakeside redevelopment will have a big impact on the school district. And I hope that you'll keep the channels open and keep the district informed and ask anything that you think may have, may have impact on the district as you're deciding what form of redevelopment, how, what the numbers of units will be to replace Lakeside Terrace.
Any questions? Esther.
Thank you. I don't know if you can answer these questions, and we don't have to have an answer tonight, but one thing I was wondering about was if, if a family relocates to another location in Urbana, continue to be in the Urbana school system, but they'll be in a different, assuming the kids are in elementary school. Actually, I should go back and ask that question. It's my impression, most of the children, you have those numbers.
Yeah, of the, of the eighty-eight, forty-two are in kindergarten through fifth grade, fourteen are in early childhood, seventeen are in the middle school, and fifteen are in the high school.
Well, for those forty-two who are in elementary school, they relocate to another Urbana school district location, but a different elementary school district, can their parents petition to have them continue at the same elementary spending?
Yes, they can, and actually, since there's a more senior member, doesn't the district have a, have the responsibility to keep students at the same school as possible during the school year? Yeah.
What was I about for future years?
I, yes, I think that the district would make every effort to, to be able to keep children at the same school, but it would have to be taken on a, you know, a space-available basis.
Now, if the family relocates to Champaign, then the child, am I correct in understanding the child can complete the school year, but after that would not be able to stay in their Urbana school district, is that right?
I believe you can still petition in.
In Champaign?
No, no. Sorry.
I don't think so. Okay, and now the question, because I remember this happened with Lincoln Mobile Home Park, it was the same thing, there were people who misunderstood because they were able to keep their children in school for the rest of the year, they had misunderstood and thought, there were several families who moved to Shatterwood Mobile Home Park, thinking they could, remaining two or three years of elementary school, and actually, two families, upon finding out that wasn't true, moved out of Shatterwood to get back into Urbana because they really wanted to keep their kids in Urbana schools. But I'm wondering about, we've been talking about this, I think maybe we can get the housing authority to fix this, they were, or the proposal we have before us tonight has the relocation period being from January till April, my concern was if a family relocates to Champaign and wants their child to finish the school year at the, what they're at, that they'll be able to do that, but that the school district will not be able to provide transportation, and that's, and yeah, and John is shaking his head that that's correct. So, so we have, so we need to be concerned about the transportation needs for these children.
The numbers are high enough that I think it would want advantage if, if the city is able to, to take that into account.
Thank you, I appreciate you bringing up these, these concerns, because that's, we have, we don't have all the information, but concerns about the welfare of these children, and particularly with regard to their educational needs, is shared by many of us here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cope. Next, we have Carl Weber, where he says he'd like to speak at the time of the agenda item regarding the bonds for Clark Lindsey Village, so if you'd like to wait until then? Okay, Carl. That's all we have for public input. No objection, we'll move into the regular agenda. Resolution number, item number five, resolution number two thousand and four dash oh-four dash zero-zero-eight R, authorizing an extension of an agreement for use of right-of-way, the American, this regarding the American, Illinois American Water Company. And Steve, do you want to give us a?
Sure, just real quickly, our current franchise agreement expires, the negotiations are continuing. The water company representatives have asked us, that being myself and Fred Stevens, Champaign City Attorney, to see if we can get an extension. They've given us a request extension of up to three months, and so our proposal is for an extension of approximately three months, it would be to August fourth, which I believe the first Urbana City Council meeting in August is August third, first Champaign City Council meeting, so that would give us that last meeting to get something done, and we hope there is something to get done at that point.
Any questions? Daniel, first.
How negotiations are going that you want to share with us?
Well, there's progress on some fronts and less progress on others. We're meeting essentially basis every Thursday afternoon. I can say that there's, there's been little to no progress on anything like an option to purchase or anything like that. Otherwise, we've had, we've had very good discussions, we've learned a lot of those concerns, and have, have made good progress on, on items that are of everyone's interest, and I think I'd like, I think it'd be best for us to continue to try to come up with This doesn't, this would not foreclose the exercise of various other options that are available to us at the end of that period. It would be nothing more than as if the franchise were expiring on August, April thirtieth.
Ruth?
That was the same question, sorry, thank you.
I would ask, Steve, does it, I understand the sensitive nature of negotiations and how they move forward and beginning with the shape of the table, et cetera, but do you anticipate any movement on the, on the option to purchase? It looked like they, they might be willing to.
It's tough to say at this point.
Okay, okay. Tough to say at this point. Well, I, we need a motion on the resolution.
Move to send the resolution to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Move, seconded to send this to the council with a recommendation for approvals, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Next item, number six, resolution number two thousand and four dash oh-four dash zero-zero-nine R, providing for the financing by the city of Urbana, Illinois, of the acquisition and construction of certain nursing home facilities to provide increased job opportunities and retain existing jobs, issuance of multiple series of capital improvement revenue bonds for the Clark Lindsey Village Incorporated project, in connection therewith. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, supplemental mortgage and security agreement, and an assignment agreement, and supplemental assignments securing such bonds, authorizing and providing for the sale of such bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery arbitrage regulation agreements and related matters. And this is where Carl Weber has asked to speak.
While he's, while he's getting up there, I'll say my two cents. Just in context, we've done these in the past for Clark Lindsey Village, the most important point to, to understand on these is that in no way or shape or manner would the city be on the hook at all for the repayment of this. We do these as, as a way to assist projects, particularly those of this nature, and based upon our review that there's no impact to the staff, would recommend approval, turn it over to Carl.
Thank you. I'm Carl Weber, and here representing Clark Lindsey Village, Cliff Ingersoll, the director of Clark Lindsey, and will be available to answer any questions you have. We are pleased to report a considerable project that's coming up now to bring up the, bring the nursing home section up to date, although it's very effective, it really needs a facelift, and that's, that's the primary portion of the first. The second issuance of the later fifteen million focuses on the addition of additional units. The waiting list is very frankly too long, and the way is to build more units and build them as they are now being requested. So we're looking forward to that and would like to have your support and assistance if you have any question, answer your questions.
Are there any questions? Yes, Ruth.
What sort of schedule are we looking at for construction?
Construction on the first portion will be in the very near future. We would anticipate that with the bonds would be closed sometime in the next month, and then, of course, arbitrage regulations require that it be done soon, so they're in the process of, of getting the final architectural plans.
And would we see construction begin this summer?
Yes, Cliff.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Just got one. Yes, Jim?
The total, total amount of bonds is twenty million?
Yes.
And the first increment would be five million?
Yes.
Is this something similar? Clark Lindsey having a line of credit, so that as they need the money, they could, they'll have it on hand already?
The, the, the line of credit concept is actually, would actually come from the bank, we, and we will, we will have to arrange another lending arrangement for the other fifteen million, but it was Kurt Froelich's, the bond council's suggestion that we only bother you once, and well, after this, if, if this is approved, we will not have to come back to bother you, but we'll then have to still arrange our financing for the second, the second phase. So the financing, the financing doesn't bother, bother you or affect you since it's all the city's obligation, and so we took Kurt's suggestion and put them, put the two together.
Todd, Carl, just to follow up on the question of scheduling, and when would, when would you expect the construction, and as for that phase two of the fifteen million, what the approximate time for that would be?
We're in the process of, of doing a number of things, including some surveys, as well as determining where it might be on the, on the site, and it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a date that would be, that's one that we can, but looking forward to it in the near future.
Any further questions? Todd, or, excuse me, Carl, this is, in other words, the city is putting its good name behind this bond issue to character of the development, not to obligate us in any way financially.
Yes, sir. The only time you ever did that was with tumors.
Pardon me?
The only time you ever did that with tumors is about nineteen eighty-four.
Right.
And I think it was the first time.
Really? Yeah, that was quite a move.
Took us fifteen years to get off the cook.
No further questions, and thank you, Carl.
We'd point out that Clark Lindsey, besides being a great neighbor to southeast of five taxpayers in the city of Urbana, so.
Oh, that's great, yeah, we need those.
Oh, we're happy to be.
Good. We need a motion.
Move, approve. Move. I move that we send this resolution to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Move and second to council with a recommendation for approval, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Next on the agenda is item seven, the long-range transportation will be led by Rita Black, the Regional Plan Commission. I believe that's, is that your name, Rita?
No, I'm Susan Cheveria.
Pardon me?
I know, I'm a transportation planner with the Champaign, Urbana, Urbana urbanized area transportation study. Rita Black is my coworker.
Oh, yeah, hi, I didn't know which one is.
I'm going to go ahead and give you a bit of an overview of the long-range transportation planning process for the Champaign-Urbana-Savoy-Bonville urbanized area. The LRTP, as we call it, the Long Range Transportation Plan, is a financially constrained plan that has to deal how the local area transportation system should evolve over the next twenty years. That includes the Champaign, Urbana, Savoy, and Bonville municipalities, and it must be updated every five years by the local area metropolitan, metropolitan planning organization, which is QWATs and the Regional Planning Commission, according to the federal regulations. The parties involved with the LRTP plan are QWAT staff, which are Rita and myself, and we also have an engineer and another planner. We have an LRTP steering committee, which is made up of public works and planners from the municipalities. We also have our QWATs committees, which are the technical and policy committees. We have our local government staffs, such as the city of Urbana Planning Community Development Department, state and federal government staffs, interested local agencies, and interested local residents. Our current LRTP process lasts about thirty months, and it includes the following tasks. We have public meetings, LRTP committee meetings, data collection, data analysis, text writing and mapping, project budgeting and selection, and an approval process. To give you a little background on our public meetings to date, we had a set of subcommittee meetings in October, November of two thousand and two, where we discussed issues, forces, trends, and opportunities regarding transportation in the urbanized area. In January of two thousand and three, we had a public workshop to discuss visions, goals, objectives with our public. In July of two thousand and three, we had an open house to unveil our existing conditions report, and to talk about our, our travel modeling process and our travel surveys that we completed earlier in the year. Just last month, we had an open house where we asked the public to give us their preferred alternative for the vision of the Champaign-Urbana urbanized area transportation system, and our last open house will be sometime around October of this year, where we'd be accepting, accepting comments and questions on the draft LRTP. In terms of data collection, the following go into the LRTP process. We have our household travel survey, which was sent out to, help me.
We sent out about three thousand surveys, and we collect about four hundred ninety surveys.
We also had our roadside origin destination survey, where we went out to the friends in the community to try to see where cars are coming from and going to. We completed traffic counts, especially in two thousand and one, in hundreds of areas throughout Champaign-Urbana-Savoy. We also have done an inventory of travel modes and streets in the area, completed the greenways and trails plan over the last couple of years that coincides with the LRTP planning process. We have land use and zoning data, environmental data, and we also have census data in terms of population and demographics. In terms of the approval process for the LRTP, we're looking for at least a partial first draft approval, and where we will send it to our committees in May, and we'll have a final draft approval in September by our committees, and the final actual approval of the document will be by the public, we have a required thirty-day public comment period over this year, and we will send the final document to our QWATs tech and policy committees in November. The document must be into IDOT and the Federal Highway Administration by December of this year. If we do not get this done, then by that time, we risk losing transportation funding for local projects. And Rita's going to talk now about the travel model and scenarios that go along with the long-range transportation plan.
Okay, the second part, the presentation today, focus on travel model and the different scenarios that we are evaluating to decide about our vision for twenty twenty-five for the urbanized area. Big element that we use to model our area was a transportation model or travel model. This model simulates existing travel conditions in the urbanized area. We use all the data that we collect, travel surveys, to develop the model and to make the model, a model that fit the condition that we have here. The model simulates possible future conditions based on the, and different possible scenarios that we'll be showing later. The model determine how this input will affect travel in the urbanized area for the future and right now, and provide us with numbers, will tell us better how to plan better for the future, to make more effective planning decisions for the future. The existing conditions include roadways and intersection geometries, use of street map, public transit routes with headways and number of buses running on the current system, two thousand population and employment data, the population data is based on the census, and the employment data was collected from the university, school district, and Chamber of Commerce. I think that we need to clarify at this point is that the model for existing conditions does not include pedestrian and bicycle path, and does not include other transportation modes like untracked, untracked or air or trucks. This is the output, will be difficult for you to see it there, but this is the output for the current conditions from the transportation model. As you can see, the red lines show have some, we can say some congestion, this is on the ramps accessing the interstate system, and the green line shows where we are close to congestion in the urbanized area for the year two thousand, two thousand and one. Future conditions, the idea of the model is to use it to evaluate future conditions in the urbanized area based on population and employment projections. The scenario that will be presenting, scenario that will be presenting will include the Curtis Road interchange with I-57, and some improvements on the roadway condition. We'll have Olympian Drive extending to Cunningham Avenue, Windsor Road improved from Philo to Illinois-Guantory, Florida Avenue extended to Illinois-Guantory, Prospect Avenue south of Windsor Road up to Curtis Road, and Lincoln Avenue connecting to Olympian Drive. These are projects that we know will be done in the future, in the next twenty-five years because we've included in our top program. The other scenario, the second scenario, is based on the ring road concept, that will have all of the elements that are mentioned above for the other scenario, but will all trumpet interchange with High Cross Road on Seventy-Four. Will have Curtis Road improved to connect with Illinois-Guantory, in the first, having Curtis Road improved from the interchange up to first, with the second scenario that include the ring road concept. Curtis Road from the interchange. Curtis Road from the interchange with 57 through Illinois One Thirty. And we are presenting Rising Road as the western leg of the Ring Road. For these two different scenarios, we'll be presenting three different alternatives. Alternative A, A that is just what is going on right now, current development trends. Alternative B will consider a more compact development regarding land uses, population and employment, and a more balanced mode split between transit and regular automobile traffic. And alternative C, that more transit-oriented development, that will concentrate more on having intensive transit system in the core areas of the urbanized area. This is what we call Scenario One, that, as you can see, has Olympian Drive extended from 57 up to Cunningham Avenue, the extension of to connect with Olympian Drive, the improvement of, the interchange of Curtis Road with I-57, and the improvement of Curtis Road early up to First Street. The improvement of Windsor between Philo and Illinois One Thirty, and the extension of Florida Avenue up to One Thirty, one, Scenario One. Now, let's see what happened when we evaluate Scenario One with the first alternative, which is current development trends. This is what will happen in the future if we develop an area. We'll have some, as you can see in red, we'll have some congestion along Curtis Road between First and Philo. We'll have some congestion also on First, north of Curtis Road. We'll have some congestion along Illinois One Thirty, and even some congestion in the recently improved US-150 or University Avenue. And you also can see some congestion on the interstate system, 74, basically 74, and some other points of congestion areas. If we evaluate B, which is a more balanced mode split, this means we'll have a more intensive transit system, some redevelopment in the core areas, and a little bit of more high-intensity residential and commercial mix, will have this kind of output. We'll have congestion on Curtis Road between First and Philo, and we'll still have some congestion on Illinois One Thirty. If we move to the same Scenario One, but I see, which is transit-oriented development without some bus routes on campus, the congestion decrease on Illinois One Thirty, we still have some congestion on Curtis Road between First and Race there, but the congestion on First Street changed from red to green, a little bit congestion on that area, and the congestion on University Avenue, US or US-150 disappear on that area. We can see that as we move along the, from A to C, the number of conflict, or the number of congestion point on the, on the area decrease also. Then let's evaluate this scenario, which is the Ring Road scenario. Already mentioned, we are using Rising Road as the western leg of the Ring Road. We are extending a four-way section of Curtis Road between Rising Road to Illinois One Thirty. Then we have a north leg of Illinois One Thirty extending to connect with Olympian Drive, and Olympian Drive going from 74, from 57 Cunningham, connecting with the leg that we have on the northeast section of Urbana. At the same time, we have connecting Olympian Drive with Rising Road over 74. In this scenario, we also present the extension of, as I mentioned before, the extension of Florida Avenue up to One Thirty, and the improvement of Windsor Road between Philo and Illinois One, so extending Lincoln Avenue to connect with Olympian, and the trumpet interchange at 74 and Illinois One Thirty. Okay, let's see what happens when we evaluate our model for this. For current development trends, we have, as you can see, Curtis Road, the congestion on Curtis Road between, that we always saw on the other scenarios between First and Philo, or First and Race disappear in this case, and the Illinois, and the congestion on Illinois concentrate between Washington and 74, basically. And the congestion on US-150 in the case of Urbana disappear. We have another points of... If we move to alternative B, which is a more balanced mode split between buses and automobile, you will see again that Curtis Road disappear, and the congestion on Illinois One Thirty is concentrated again between Washington and 74, but there is no congestion along University Avenue, US One. Then moving to alternative C, which is transit-oriented development without some bus routes on campus, there is no congestion on Curtis, there is almost no congestion on Illinois, the congestion there disappear, there is no congestion on US-150, University Avenue, and it's just, there is just a little bit of congestion at these in all these, the ramps at US-45 and 74. All these, all these scenarios have quantitative, quantitative measures that we evaluate to be able to compare all of them, among them, to decide which one is the best one. We will not be the one deciding if the best one is the community, along with members of our steering committee. The element that we use to measure all the alternatives were total vehicle mile travel, roadway congestion, hour travel, average hour of travel time, transit ridership, transit usage, street network coverage. We also use some qualitative measure like transit, how many houses were located near transit, the population and employment balance, population density, infrastructure cost, development on agricultural lands, and access to park. We have all the numbers that are from all the different scenarios. Here you will see a summary of the ranks in all those different measures that I already mentioned, or indicators. Here we are presenting from one to five, one to six, being one the best one, how were the results for the different scenarios. If we look at the table, you can see that the last column, Scenario, alternative C, has the highest number of ones. One for total vehicle mile travel, one for roadway congestion, one for total vehicle hour travel, one for average hour of travel time, one for transit ride, and just two in transit usage, because alternative C, Scenario One for planned projects, is the highest in this case. This will tell us in terms of comparison which better. Here are the qualitative measure that were measured using DIES for all the different scenarios. In this case, Scenario One and Scenario Two, we measured, because this is more qualitative, Scenario One and Scenario Two, the output is basically the same for this. We have for B, for both one and two, the results, and again, alternative C is the best one, as you can see, has the highest number of ones from the rankings that we, you see in the table. How will be selecting the preferred alternative? Public, we have had open houses showing the people the results and asking them for comments. Staff from the different agencies that work with QWATs or belong, local agencies, will determine which, which will be the preferred alternative. While we, we will consider any comment received, we are more concept-oriented than project-oriented. Residents, we gave them at the open house, the survey, are not given the option of choosing particular transportation projects. What we ask them is to tell us which will be the active, which is the vision that they have for the future for the urbanized area, and based on that, we'll decide which will be the one that will be selected. If you have any question, all the documentation, webpage, and you can call us or contact us if you want any new information.
Open house at Lincoln Square Mall, where some of, we looked at primarily 130, since we were looking at Urbana's piece. This is the first time I've seen the, the whole picture, although I've certainly heard I stood, there is a road in the ring, the Ring Road actually looks, the right north of the highway east of High Cross Road. The Ring Road goes through some of the most beautiful parts of habitat, animal habitat, some of the little pieces of ecology that we actually have in Urbana, which is very little. It goes right through my constituents' Eco Village development, and he's been building for years. And I was at that public meeting, and he asked, "Is this right? Is it really going through my Eco Village?" And he was told, and I was standing there, "This, oh, this is a mistake on the map." Now I see the map, and it's not a mistake. The Ring Road is, it's looked at as going through that exact area, so I would, I would really like explanation.
Okay. What we are presenting here are just ideas. Nothing has been evaluated in terms of alignment at all, at all. These are just ideas. And this is, what we are looking here is just the general picture for the urbanized area in terms of transportation. We are just beginning to work with the Illinois One Thirty project. The, the purpose of the Illinois One Thirty project is to define in detail what is going to happen in that area. At this point, we don't know if we'll be building that roadway. The roadway could be improving High Cross Road right now, but we need to consider what is going to happen in the future. And we know at this point, we have to be responsible for what is going to happen in the future. We know that with the development of Walmart on that area, the, the population and employment in that area will grow, and that's why we are having congestion on Illinois One Thirty, and we were looking for different alternatives to improve the flow of traffic on that area. And as I told you, at this point, we don't have any detailed plan for that area. We are starting to work on that, and for the purpose of the long-range transportation plan, this is a study area that will be subject to the result of the Illinois One Thirty project. But we need to act responsible, because we know that in the future, we'll have a lot of traffic, and we need to start looking at different ways of solving that problem.
So, but you have a map that you showed us, and which is on your website, which shows a road going through a location that, that, that my constituents was told, and I stood there, was told, "This is not, this is a mistake, and this is not one of the scenarios, this is not what we're looking at." So, why is it that, you know, three weeks later, there, I see a map, and it goes right through?
At the time that, that the line was in that map, we didn't have this done. We didn't have this done at the time. That was true, honestly true, wasn't done. Later, when we evaluate the model, we found out that we had congestion, and we need to look for answers to improve congestion on that area. And we have told him, we also called him, come to the, what do we have? But as I told you, this is a generalized idea that what can be done in the future. It doesn't have any alignment design at this point. As I told you, can be Illinois One, High Cross Road to use to complete the, the, the Ring Road, can be a new roadway, can be cottonwood road, can be anything. At this point, we don't have any plans, any design for that area.
I have a comment, I guess, which could be a question, which is that when you list your criteria, there are three things that are clearly missing from the criteria you're using. One is animal habitat, there is no mention of animal habitat at all. The second is sprawl, and by that, and that word is thrown around a lot, and what I mean when I use that word is things that promote non-contiguous development with existing development. So, you know, connecting Olympia Drive with, with what is Cunningham Avenue, depending on the timing of it, could promote sprawl in that, you know, we basically helmen going north. So, I would strongly suggest that as you move forward, that when you look at criteria, you include ecological diversity, animal habitat, and sprawl, the desire to prevent sprawl as criteria. What, what I saw was that your criteria primarily has to do with traffic congestion, and, and you had said at the beginning, it doesn't include bike paths or pedestrian traffic, but I also consider animal corridors, and I think it's very easy to leave that out of the picture and then kind of destroy what little we have in terms of, in terms of ecological diversity here.
Okay. Can I clarify that?
Yes.
We are in total analysis for that area, but there are elements, sure, in the same way that you can measure others, like congestion, you can measure congestions, we have, we have done that. The second element that you mentioned about sprawl, basically the three different scenarios that we are presenting here, the basic of this scenario is sprawl. That's why we have three different ones. The first one, which is current development trends, talk about having more development on the fringe areas and just a little redevelopment on the core areas. That's what is going on right now in Champaign and Urbana. The second scenario is having some development on the fringe areas, but providing transit service to those new areas. And the third one is limiting sprawl, basically. It's just concentrating the development on the core areas, high intensities, the development of residential and commercial and offices, and providing transit service to those areas. The, the concept that we use to develop these three different scenarios were based on limiting sprawl in the urbanized area.
Yeah, I guess I, when I look at the Ring Road, I, I see a recipe for sprawl, and I guess I would need to, to really be, I mean, again, this is the first time I've seen it, so I'm responding to kind of first impression, but I, I look at it, and it, and part it has to do with timing. We would, you know, develop something once it's contiguous and once the services need to be provided in that area, but, but it's difficult for me to see that in any other way at this point. I come from Gainesville, Florida, and they had a different concept, which worked very well, which is instead of a ring road, they actually had a ring of greenery, and, and there was no development that was allowed outside of this ring of greenery until every piece was touching on the inside, and then they were able to move out from there. And so by doing that, they're able to keep things compact. Now, we don't have the same kind of forest and, and ecological kind of diversity as, as is around Gainesville, Florida, but I still think that that kind of concept would be useful.
That's the idea, actually. The idea is to limit development, to act as a gross boundary of the urbanized area, and I think the idea, when, when we build these scenarios, we talk with staff, cities, Champaign-Urbana, and even Savoy, we talk, which are your plans, and based on the comprehensive plan and the ideas that they have, we develop the scenarios. And was at that point when we decided to have the Ring Road and try to use the Ring Road to limit development beyond that point. And you can use, even, we talk about Illinois One Thirty, one of the ideas, looking at that area, is we can have some kind of development there, where you can use the, that green area on the northeast of Urbana to limit that development, basically. But that's the idea behind the...
I have a final question, and I'll, I'll yield the floor, that the, the scenarios you showed, you know, I know we're looking at, what, 20 years out, 21 years out? The scenarios you showed, showed Curtis Road's congestion in southern Urbana, between Champaign and Urbana, but, and I'm not really sure where that congestion would come from.
Well, the congestion, remember that we'll have a new sewer in parallel to Curtis Road south of Curtis Road. That means that we'll have a lot of development on that area, resident... That means that we'll have a lot of development on that area, residential development on that area. You will have a two-lane roadway at the beginning, and probably later in 20 years, section there. But at the same time, that roadway will be connected to the interstate system. Then, all the traffic coming from other areas, all the people coming from other areas to work at the university will use Curtis Road at the entrance from the south. Along with that, you have the people living along Illinois One Thirty, with all the development that will occur due to the sewer system. Then that will generate a lot of traffic on that area, and that's why you have congestion. Unless you improve the north-south arterias, a lot of congestion there.
Okay. I guess, this, my final comment would be that I would strongly urge you to, scenarios, and you haven't set in stone for you to remove the portion of the road that, that goes through the most ecologically diverse part of this area, the entire Champaign-Urbana area, with the exception of some part of Mohammed. And possibly imagine if you put animal habitat in one of, as one of your criteria, and there are ways of measuring animal habitat. You can go, you can count animals. There are plenty of people at the U of I who did that for a living, and I can't imagine how that would ever be considered a feasible out for, for expansion of a road. And I, I know that if my constituents saw that map, they would, they would go nuts. I'm just being, that is absolutely the case, and I don't know exactly how I would speak to them. I don't know how I'll speak to them after seeing that.
They have seen this, they have seen it.
Well, I, I guess I've heard that, but I, I've heard back and forth, they're going to go through this area, they're not. I hear back and forth, now, a presentation to me shows that it goes right through, and I invite you to actually walk in that area. It's some of the most beautiful land, rolling hills, animals, the creek actually becomes actual waterway, like it is in Champaign-Urbana. I mean, it's just, it would be a sin to put a road through that area.
I just actually, I understand that this is sort of a projection of where a future Ring Road might maybe go, and there's no plan on the table to build it yet. But nevertheless, the assumptions are interesting. Look at the part of it that's north of I-74 on, it looks like it goes sort of through this intersection of High Cross Road, and then swings east of it, and then swings back west, and hooks up again with High Cross Road right before it gets to I-74. Why does it take that swing east, instead of just turning and going straight south along High Cross Road, the existing roadway, the way it seems to through the rest of the map?
Well, we did it that way, because all the way through High Cross Road, there are many people living in that area. And just the fact that people is living there will have a lot of impact on then, at the beginning. Then if we decide to put it in the middle of kind of nothing, we know that there are, there is, there are a lot of vegetation there, there is a lot of things going there, but there is no people, like in High Cross Road, is less controversial in that case. But as I mentioned, we're ready for the future to evaluate which would be the path if we decide to have a roadway there.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, Ruth.
The extent that, that the, the presentation that you've made, and I appreciate all this information, is also a request to get some feedback. I want to echo Ms. Chenoweth's concerns about the Ring Road. I think the, the, some of the other, and ideas, including improving Windsor from Philo to High Cross, is a really good idea, improvements, proposed improvements down the line to Curtis Road, makes a lot of sense, and High Cross Road. But that, a lot of concern and a lot of comments raised by the public, by the, by various committees of the council and of the city about north of, in the development that, or the proposed highway and improved roadways into this important ecological area north of Urbana. And I think it's just important that, to the extent you're, you're built, or keeping in mind concerns of council, concerns of government, and concerns of the people, that it's not just a couple people on council who are concerned about this, but this is a concern that I hear over and over again when we look at what's going on at Interstate or intersection with, with 74. That's something that comes up every single time we talk about it. So improvements to High Cross Road near the proposed Walmart, I think makes a lot of sense. Curtis improvements make a lot of sense. But to preserve that area north of, northeast interstate, I think is going to be very important, and would affect a lot of the support, or lack of support, that the long-range transportation plan would have if, if the proposal ends up sort of highway into, into this valuable ecological area. Thank you.
Any further questions? Is it, thank you, Ms. Black. Oh, John. John Dimmitt, Regional Plan Commission.
CEO. I think that, Stan, is that one of the things that the traffic models showed is that of the traffic coming up 130 and going into and along University Avenue, a significant portion of that, and Rita, you're going to have to give me the percentage of it, a very significant portion of it, wasn't, the destination wasn't Urbana. The destination was north of Urbana. And so what you will have, that will have to be made, as to how you're going to move that traffic. If you're going to move the traffic in on University Avenue to Five Points and north, you're going to have a very difficult time creating what potentially would have to be a six-lane road up Cunningham, order to get the traffic moved to the north part of our county, particularly as Rantoul grows its employment base, and there's additional commuters going to Rantoul for jobs. And so trying to look at is the fact that we're going to have to, that traffic will move north of Interstate 74 in that area, and the issue is how do you move traffic through that area? And that's what, that, why we're showing a line up there, it isn't, it doesn't mean that that's the location of the road. It does mean that somehow or another, there's a certain level of traffic that will have to move through that area. And how we get that through the area, study's going on simultaneously. And the open house that you were at, at Lincoln Square, was for the 130 High Cross Road corridor study, which is going on simultaneously with this study. This study is in the, in the impact, and the High Cross Road study will be more detailed, and will fill in and build, or help build this part of the regional study. So what, what the transportation engineers are saddled with is how do we move those cars through there? And High Cross Road itself has many safety issues, with the number of curb cuts that are already in existence, with the fact that the Clement Cemetery is right at Brownfield Woods, which creates a bottleneck that can only be resolved through pretty intense, for about 400 feet in there, there's a pretty intense area that would be almost impossible to get a traffic artery through there that would promote safe travel. So that begins to make that alternative less attractive, and that goes to Mr. Otto's comment about why didn't we draw the line right down High Cross Road? Now we've got to find another way to get a traffic artery through there. And we're 18 months away from even being able to identify reasonable alternatives. That's what the 130 study's all about, is alternatives. And one of them's being tested as a no-build option, and just allow people to continue to drive up through there. But if you do that, you have, not only the curb cut, because they have conflicts with bikeway, and there's an inability to even walk along High Cross Road in any kind of safe fashion. So there's all kinds of alternatives, and your study area for 130 does not extend to cottonwood road, but beginning to take a little bit of a look at that. But that really goes against the, the effort to try to limit sprawl. If you move the road an additional mile east of Urbana, then you absolutely have leapfrog development. And so there's some tension here in trying to move the traffic safely, and to do it that's reasonably close to the urban, but not cause any more disruption than what is required.
What would happen if you, an intersection, an interstate intersection with High Cross Road, and just eliminated the portion of the Ring Road from High Cross over to Cunningham, so that wanting to get to Rantoul could take I-74 up to Cunningham, and then go on north on 45?
Well, with the development the city already has planned, with the O'Brien Car Dealership and so forth, you've, once again, you'll have some, some choices that will have to be made as to how much you want North Cunningham Avenue right in there to look like North Prospect looks today. You, you'll have to, you'll have to make some decisions.
But, I mean, commercial development tends to follow traffic counts, so if you don't have them, that intersection, basically, you'll have your commercial development moving out several other miles.
Well, one of the options is, one of the options is, sorry for interrupting, Council.
That's okay.
One of the options that's being looked at, that came from your Comprehensive Planning Update Committee, is that, that this section, when we think of Ring Road, everybody immediately thinks of Interstate 465 around Indianapolis, or something like that. And we're not really talking about the entire area looking like Windsor Road across the south side of campus, or anything like that. We need to open our eyes to, keep our minds open to many alternatives, one of which could be a two-lane limited access parkway, heavily similar to what you find in the East Coast area, that is an amenity with bikeway along it, walking trail and so forth. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean 60-foot wide slab of concrete with four 12-foot lanes running down it with ability to pull off to the side. Those are some of the issues and concerns that are going to be explored during your 130 corridor plan study.
Okay. Thank you.
Daniel.
Traffic counts at, at the Cunningham and the interstate. And I think that we want to see stimulation of development in that area, and ideally, if Walmart had actually taken us, our staffs, us up on our original offers, wasn't so much of an offer as much as a request, that they look at that area for development rather than High Cross Road area, then we, we would have avoided some of these problems. I don't quite understand your response to Mr. Otto's question. It seems to me that you can get people on the highway, and then get them onto Cunningham. And I think that maybe, you know, this is always the problem with, that maps look at things from high up above, and that's good, because we can, we can make some analyses, we can look at data, although the data is very partial in this case, and doesn't include other, you know, the non-voting population, I'll just keep repeating that. But I think that the maps, you know, it's, the Ring Road concept is an easy concept. It's easy, you know, it's got appeal to it, but I think that when we look at how we want to move traffic, I see no reason at this point, and I, I've not looked at the data you've looked at, and I'm not going to pretend to, but I just don't understand, I haven't yet heard the argument of not use our interstate for what interstates are for, which is to move large quantities of people.
To move large quantities of people in non-local traffic. And the interstate was never designed, I mean, we, we here are using the interstate as a local road, from Champaign to Urbana. That's the problem with Interstate 74. It was never intended to be a local road for local traffic. It's intended for people that are going from the Indiana State Line over to the Iowa State Line, or some places in between. It's not intended to be a local traffic artery. It depends on how big you want the interstate to be. Already, the traffic on the interstate is approaching where we probably need a six-lane interstate. And indeed, IDOT is exploring the possibility of, of turning Interstate 74 into a six-lane road from Danville to Mohammed, because of the level of traffic. We're already approaching a point where we're, we've exhausted the capacity on Interstate 74 for traffic. So you have to, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's costs and benefits. If you dump it to 74, do we really want an eight-lane interstate through there? What do we want North Cunningham to look like, to be completely unserviceable, like a lot of people think North Prospect is right now, where people avoid it? Those are some of the issues, and also, keep in mind that we're looking at, under the most ideal situation, anything that we would be looking at, the existing projects that Rita talked about, won't be, there will be no ability to start construction on those projects for probably at least 15 years, because of the money constraint. But we, we're trying to crystal ball out quite, quite a few years. And why do we need to do that? We need to do that because if we're going to construct new roads, we have to preserve the right-of-way today, so that we're not these houses, or getting too far into their front yards, you know, right up almost to their front door, to allow the roads to be, to be built. And so that's, that's why the, the plan is, is around.
I would be interested in seeing an analysis of, of a connector road that just goes north of the interstate in that case, through some areas that, right now, I think are both not, are under-year developed, and some industrial sites which may not be around in, in 15 years, rather than looking through, you know, rather than the kind of tidy-looking Ring Road that, right through what used to be Big Grove.
Well, I, and I dig into the data, and I encourage you to do that, and I encourage you to ask Rita about the output of the model. I'm a planner of the old school. The models are good, but the models don't, I mean, there's a, you got to go by your gut a little bit. But also, what we did find out from the interviews, and from traffic counts that we did, is that there's already today, you know, there's no Walmart out there, there's not much development up and down 130, TK Wendels, and that's about it. But there's already a significant amount of traffic going up High, on that two-lane oil and chip, on their way to Thomasboro and to, Thomasboro's not a big destination, but on the way to the north side to Rantoul, mostly to work. And so one of the disadvantages, the potential disadvantages of the do-nothing alternative, is that we'll end up with a significant number of accidents on High Cross Road as people continue to drive what looks like a country road at speed limits far in excess of 35 miles an hour. And so it, you know, that has to be looked at as well. And you just, 40%?
14%.
Four.
14 to 17.
14 to 17% of the cars currently going up High Cross Road, their destination isn't the Apple Dumpling or anything up there. It's to go through there. I know that's not a lot of cars, but that's today. That's today. And when you project that out 20 years into the future, you end up with a lot more cars going up High Cross. And I have a little disagreement with the people that live out there, in that I've been here for 36 years, a lot more houses up there than there were 36 years ago. There's a lot more houses. And so if the development trend continues, I'm not sure that some of the animals aren't going to be disturbed anyway because of the presence of additional houses. If you think about the number of building permits in the area, there's been quite a few. And so the nature of that area, in your comp plan update, is going to be called rural residential, not agriculture, but rural residential. And we continue trends for people that like that kind of living environment, so that'll add to the traffic up there as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Yes, Bill.
I wanted to add a, a comment or concern, something that the COAT's group needs further, that didn't come up yet tonight, and as you saw on the presentation that Rita and Susan made, was the Curtis Road corridor and the congestion or future impacts of increased traffic on Curtis. And one thing you need to be aware of is that, is taking a very firm position that they do not want to see any improvements to Curtis Road east of Neal Street, you know, over to High Cross Road. This is largely at the request of the College of ACES. We have meetings coming up ahead to try to work out and find out what are the issues, what are, what are the concerns, how can we address those? Can we come up with a letter of understanding, so that if and when there are improvements along Curtis Road, rest, but I think you can see that with the interchange at 57 and Curtis, with the sewer service growth in Savoy, the South Research Park area, continued growth, hotel, whatever expansions that occur in that area, along with just within the surrounding communities, the Homer, Philo, Sidney areas, and those people that live and commute and workshop, you know, in this area, traffic volumes are not going down on Curtis Road. So we have... going down on Curtis Road. So we have, um, some serious concerns that the university's raised from a transportation planning standpoint, um, Curtis Road is a arterial in the south part of the communities of Champagne, Urbana, Savoy, so we need to work these out and discuss them. Um, but just so you know, uh, at this juncture, the university's position is they do not want to see an improved Curtis Road east of Neal Street.
Further questions, recommendations? Okay, well, thank you. Ms. Black, John, thank you. We'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the Lakeside Terrace draft redevelopment plan. Will, Mr. Ron?
Yes, this evening, uh, we come back with a draft redevelopment plan for Lakeside Terrace. This is consistent with the provisions of the draft intergovernmental agreement that the, so considered earlier between the City of Urbana and the Housing Authority Champagne County. Um, I'll quickly run through the memo and we can look at the, the document. Uh, again, the redevelopment plan is based on previous documents Council looked at. The intergovernmental agreement just takes into consideration our consolidated plan, provisions for the redevelopment. Uh, basically, the redevelopment plan has the following elements, the demolition and relocation, uh, onsite redevelopment of a hundred tax-credit units and twenty-four of those units would be designated as replacement units by using project-based Section Eight vouchers. Uh, another component is, uh, the Housing Authority applying for replacement units with hun, funding from HUD. Uh, the expectation there is approximately fourteen new public housing units, and those might be developed at any location throughout Champagne County. Uh, the last component is the provision of offsite, scattered site, if you will, replacement housing, housing units by our local community housing development organizations, we refer to as CHODOs. Uh, we have Homestead Corporation, uh, identified as providing thirty-three single-family residences, and the Urban League with nine, uh, apartment units. And the affordability for these units is based on the provision, again, of the project-based Section Eight vouchers that the Housing Authority, uh, is in position to, to provide. Uh, it's worthy to note that the, the plan itself provides for the eighty replacement housing units, that's consistent with the con plan, also provides another hundred and one other, what we might call affordable housing units. Uh, total price tag is two, twenty-one point three million dollars. Uh, Urbana share, nine-hundred-and-fifteen, seven-hundred-seventy-eight dollars. So that's a twenty-to-one ratio, if you will, and makes for a nice leveraging, uh, arrangement for our funding. Um, I think we've talked in great deal in the past about the issues, uh, that we've addressed in looking at the plan. We're certainly concerned about consistency with our consolidated plan, uh, concerned about the relocation, basically that we want to have a plan in place before we pursue demolition, optimal use of resources, concerned about deconcentrating poverty, uh, consideration of maintaining some of the city's activities, um, maximizing the affordability, uh, in, if you will, in the terms of the timeline that we can provide those affordability periods, and, and also considering public input and participation. Um, but from the background perspective, I think we've talked, asked of late, if you will, we've, we've looked at the Housing Authority's Section Eight administrative plan for how they're going to utilize their project-based assistance and provided comments on that. We've also provided comment for his relocation plan for Lakeside Terrace. Um, the plan itself, I, I mentioned the staff along with, uh, Mayor Satiswait and the Housing Authority, our nonprofit partners, um, have come up, I think, with, with a lot of win-win equations, if you will, in the plan. And we're hoping that, uh, we'll provide a comment period at some later time to gather future input, the plan, so we'd like Council to see if you consider the plan, offer suggestions, if you will. Um, again, we'll, we'll build in that public participation component, and we could be scheduled to consider, uh, adoption of the plan later in May. Uh, the fiscal price tag, um, our nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars is basically a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in bond cap conversion, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand in CDBG funds, uh, five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand in Urbana's home funds, and a hundred-and-two-thousand in home CHODO set-aside funds. And the memo itself also has a nice, uh, summary table, if you will, that, uh, highlights the, um, funding, um, unit mix to a degree, if you will. And that's a nice, uh, a nice summary piece, as well as the, the colored spreadsheet gives a little bit of a financial consideration in regard to the city's financial conduct. Uh, the draft document, redevelopment plan, I'd like to turn to, uh, to the beginning here, beyond the table of contents, our introductions, brief history, and, uh, summarizing that, in fact, the Lakeside Terrace property is, is obsolete, uh, in the analysis of the Housing Authority. The document provides a little bit of background with some of the documents and policy considerations we mentioned earlier in the memo. Turning to page two, um, again, the approach section, uh, refers to, uh, council resolutions, uh, endocics, uh, some of those key considerations, uh, that were identified in those. Uh, the redevelopment elements, uh, this again was summarized in the memo, but I'll reiterate, uh, number one, onsite redevelopment with the, the tax credit development and twenty-four replacement units, replacement funds from the Housing Authority for fourteen new public housing units, and our offside, scattered replacement housing by our CHODOs. Once, the demolition-relocation, we're hoping, uh, work with the Housing Authority that they'll be able to, um, apply to HUD for relocation, demolition funding, uh, for Lakeside Terrace. Uh, they applied for funding earlier and didn't have all the pieces, feel confident that, uh, the next round of funding, that, that they'll be successful in, in that endeavor. The onsite project, this is the hundred new tax-credit apartments that will be developed by Brinshaw Development. Uh, you all may recall Brinshaw visited us and, and provided information on, on their redevelopment plans, and this is sort of one of their phases, if you will. Uh, their initial phase was a little bit bigger, and this is one of the component parts that went into this plan. Again, twenty-four, uh, replacement units, they'll be driven by the project-based Section Eight vouchers. Uh, there's a lot of other funding components noted in the second paragraph, home funds, IDA trust funds, federal home loan bank, et cetera. The city's contribution, we'd hope to use our bond cap and convert that into, into, uh, home fundings with IDA's help at a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and, uh, provision of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in CDBG funding, uh, to address some infrastructure type improvements to support the project. Uh, architectural plans have not been developed with this, but we did include some elevations that were included in a previous package just for, for considerations. Um, and attached is a format that explains the financial implications in a spreadsheet, uh, type analysis for, for your consideration. Let me move on to another component, the replacement units done, pursued by the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority has the opportunity, once Lakeside Terrace is demolished, to apply for funding for replacement housing. Uh, the Housing Authority's done a lot of homework and contacted other housing, sense of, uh, of, of what to expect in terms of their replacement housing opportunities. Uh, Housing Authority's noted they could expect twenty-one hundred dollars per unit between a five and ten-year time, if you will, and could net out between a million and two million seventy-nine thousand dollars. And, uh, we're, we're anticipating the, the greater of that, and considering that, uh, with a unit cost of around a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, we could, uh, or the housing to create fourteen new public housing developments. And again, there's an attached spreadsheet that shows sort of the sources and uses as to how this would come to pass. Um, again, the Housing Authority pursue this once, uh, once Lakeside is demolished, and that's pretty much a HUD, a HUD regulation, if you will. The scattered-site units by our nonprofits, our Homestead and Urban League, uh, we feel very comfortable working with our CHODOs, uh, both have track records in the affordable housing field. Turning first to Homestead, Homestead Corporation, basically, uh, they've indicated they're positioned to manage thirty-three single-family housing units over a period of three years, that's eleven per year. And the location of those units are not identified, but they may be anywhere, uh, throughout Champagne County. Uh, the plant, uh, some consideration should be given to the proximity of certain services, that those populations of folks that might use that type of housing would, uh, would like to have transit, et cetera, susceptible to be considered. We note the acquisition cost, uh, three-point-one million, an average price of ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, further detail is included in the spreadsheets in terms of the two, three, and four-bedroom, um, housing prices or estimates, if you will. And the other funding, that's included, uh, private mortgages, IDA trust funds, and federal home loan bank, um, funds that'll help, uh, help the project. And again, here, the city would utilize a portion of its home funds, uh, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars. Here, again, the affordability is driven through the Section Eight project-based vouchers. Um, the, uh, the timeframe, again, is an initial ten-year period with two additional extensions to that period of time where the units would be made available to those persons under thirty percent median family income. Um, lastly, the paragraph sums up that, just to remind you that Homestead currently has nine rental units, and there does, has had success with the, uh, the SOO, thirty-two-unit single occupancy development here in Urbana. And, and Jim Rose is with us here tonight to, to answer any questions. The Urban League is branching off, you might be familiar with their lease purchase program, and is moving into the rental equation of our affordable housing. Uh, they've identified some real estate opportunities that they're working, uh, very diligently on, on closing some real estate deals, if you will. One of the properties they've identified here in Urbana that they're still negotiating, uh, is a twenty-unit complex, and they believe that, um, they could provide an arrangement where four of those units faced Section Eight vouchers, and the plan calls for those units to be provided as replacement units. Another property in Champagne, a little larger, at twenty-four units, is positioned to accommodate, uh, five of those project-based replacement vouchers, five, uh, replacement units, if you will. Um, we did want to note that the Champagne project is located in one of the areas we've identified, uh, that exceeded a certain poverty concentration. You might remember, call the map with the yellow graphic. Um, we'll continue our efforts with the Housing Authority, and that property could be granted a waiver of that requirement, uh, based on the opportunity that's afforded. Um, I understand that Birch Village might have a similar voucher to hedge a little bit on that twenty-five percent, um, HUD limitation on the project-based vouchers. And of course, we note that all the project-based vouchers are subject to their administrative, sort of a request for proposal process, um, that, that these projects would be contingent on. Uh, the plan goes on to speak to the city obligations, which I, I mentioned earlier, and that's right, um, a financial impact on page eight. Uh, we did speak a little bit to the, uh, impact to assessed valuation, and, uh, basically, we looked at that in the past and kind of trimmed it back to, uh, the developments of this particular plan, and, uh, shows a hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars accruing to all the taxing districts, and breaks it down into the city, school district, park district, et cetera. Implementation on page nine provides a nice table with timelines, et cetera. One change I'd like to note, which a comment made earlier, uh, about three-quarters of the way down, the relocation efforts for the relocation plan, we show that timeline in January oh-five through April oh-five, and with talking with the Housing Authority late Friday, uh, there was discussion that more than likely that relocation effort will be, uh, positioned to coincide with school break, so as to minimize, uh, disruption, if you will. Um, I think, you know, that really sums up the plan, attached documents and spreadsheets I mentioned in the presentation. Um, so I'll see if we've got questions.
I appreciate all this information, uh, but, and some of which I, I mentioned to you before the meeting, um, specifically on page six and seven of the document or of the package, where it talks about the Homestead Corporation proposal and the Urban League. Um, and Homestead, it doesn't talk about how long the units would be affordable. It only mentions that thirty, as far as I can tell, thirty-three homes, um, uh, eleven being provided, or eleven new each year. And Urban League talks about the homes, um, and it talks with Urban League about affordability with additional five-year extensions. Uh, I'm wondering if you can tell me, with these two projects and with the developments on the Lakeside Terrace property, how long those units would be affordable to, to families at or below thirty percent of area median income, um, and how to make the possible five-year extension listed under the Urban League discussion, um, prospect?
Good point. Um, the Homestead and Urban League units would, should have that identical language-
Okay.
About the ten-year and the two-five-years extension. They're basically are driven by the same, um, product, the, the project-based vouchers. Um, the onsite units, the twenty-four units at, uh, the Brinshaw Development will be helping us with, uh, driven by the project-based vouchers as well, but there's the consideration of the tax credit in, in there, so we just have to double-check that. I suspect it'll be more consistent with the same language as the project-based voucher units.
Okay.
And- At, one of the, the benefits of, of having a significant portion of the replacement units, um, being accomplished through Homestead and the Urban CHODOs, and, and even after the affordability period of the project-based Section Eight, their mission is to provide affordable housing. And so it's not like a tax-credit property, which is investors, um, building the tax-credit property, and after the affordability period can turn it into market rate. And, um, our, our local CHODOs are not going to do that. Their mission is affordable housing, and they're going to keep the, the affordability period, uh, or make the affordability period as long as possible. In fact, you know, when they ultimate off, they're going to keep it as affordable housing. That's their mission.
Certainly, I appreciate that, and I know, uh, the city of Urbana's, uh, experience with one of the, um, tax credit, you know, or at least one of the tax credit buildings, um, and their decision to, to get rid of, or be affordable, um, or to no longer extend their affordability program quota, or is causing problems. But I'm just wondering, the language with the, the ten years and the five years, is there a way to, to make that more certain? I mean, I understand that, that we've got CHODOs, and so their mission is, is not for profit, but even with, um, the current Urban League program with, um, the, the lease purchase program, their affordability, I believe, is only five years, and then the household can sell the house that they were given fifteen thousand dollars of, of city, um, city money for. And if there's a way to, to make that longer, I think that's, that's going to benefit everyone in the community, especially those who are the lowest-income families in our community. And I'd like to see, any way possible, to, to make that, um, instead of, um, ten years with two additional five-year extensions, can we make that mandatory additional five-year extensions? Can we make that a twenty-year, uh, just call it a twenty-year, um, uh, affordable, but just to, to can, to make it as certain as possible that, that the affordability for those, the, the lowest-income families who are going to be living there is, is extended as far as possible?
That's a good question. We, we could revisit that with, with our partners and see to the extent, um, you know, clearly, they, they need those project-based vouchers to make their rules are, and, and if, uh, if we can't, surely can't impact the HUD rules, that's, that's a given, maybe there's some rules and language in, that the agreement might consider. If it's, uh, in the, in our other HUD programming, we'll use land use restrictions, you know, and, and other tools we could explore.
Okay.
So we could look at that.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Esther?
Thank you. Do you know, on, on the Urban League and on the, uh, Homestead projects, how long their mortgages will be? Are these going to be twenty-year or thirty-year? Twenty, Jim Rose is nodding, twenty-year, eh? All right, thank you. Because that, I think that the point, um, that Ms. Wyman was getting at as far as affordability is a good one, but what, the whole thing that makes these affordable is the project-based subsidy. So if the project-based subsidy, um, expires- So if the project-based subsidy expires, and there's nothing to, we can say we want it to be affordable, but unless we're going to pay for it, it's just not going to be possible. But I suppose it is, and even though it may be the mission of a not-for-profit housing developer to provide, if the money's not there, the money's not there. But I think the idea here is that we, we're talking about capacity building for our Chodos. A part of building capacity is to do these projects and to be able to provide the affordable housing, make all the financing work. And if we can get the affordability period to be the length of the mortgage, then they should be able, some level of affordability after that. I think the big problem here, though, is what Ms. Wyman identified, that we're really only talking about a 10-year guarantee. And if those two additional five-years provided, then a lot will have been put into creating affordable housing for a relatively short period of time. And 10 years from now, we're just going to have a lot of, a lot of poor people with no place to live.
Danielle?
A couple. One is, I am unclear if the redevelopment plan is just with the Housing Authority, or if it's with Homestead and the Urban League. Do they become part and parcel of this redevelopment agreement or plan?
Yes. Yeah, I think what we envision is similar to some of the CDBG and home programs in the past, when we passed the Annual Action Plan, and then we can follow up with an agreement with sub-recipient agreement, Homestead and with the Urban League. We'd follow.
Okay. So there'd be, have a sequence of agreements. Then my question is, does this set the Homestead and the Urban League in stone? I mean, they've done an excellent job so far, so I know it's more of a question of protecting the city, and they don't anticipate problems. But if there were performance problems, one thing that I like about the year-to-year is that you can address performance problem with year-to-year for something like this, is that this is a fairly intensive redevelopment, and we do want to be able to guarantee funding over a series of years. So I'm wondering if, I guess what happens if one of the organizations is fulfill part of their agreement in this, or there are some performance problems? Are we able to revisit them? Is that going to be part of the agreement? Do we have any, you know, review of how things are going?
So I think, much like the mayor mentioned, with the Annual Action Plan, you can elect not to fund an organization that you believe might not be meeting its goals with respect to the plan.
So actually, this is a plan to fund over a period of years, but it's on an annual renewal basis, is that?
Well, yeah. Anything, you know, we've had projects in the past where, you know, they're on a slower timeframe than originally anticipated. So, you know, one scenario might be that, you know, for Homestead, for instance, with the 33 homes, they're anticipating doing it over three years. That's a nice block of homes each year that they can do. It reduces the administrative costs. We didn't want to spread it out over too many years, because he wants to make fewer applications to Ida and the other funders of his proposal. But certainly, if that good-faith effort is being made, and at the end of year three, he needs another year, we're likely to be able to grant that year's extension. On the other hand, if one of our sub-receipients, after a couple of years, is obviously not making any headway, then we need to change course.
And we'd be able to do that within the confines of this development agreement?
Right.
Okay. And a couple of other questions. I'm trying to figure out the numbers here. It states in the funding, which I think is very important, and some of the other things, other kind of housing projects, including homeownership programs. So if my math is right, roughly speaking, at the end of, say, years 2005 and to 2008, which is the years that we're looking at kind of the most intense funding, do we have about $700,000 in home and CDBG funds available? So are we basically spending what looks like to be about $210,000 a year over the course of three years? And it looks like if I add my home and CDBG funds, it comes out to be about $900,000, just to get a ballpark figure. So are we looking at about $700,000 a year left over for funding other projects? 700 to 750?
That up here, the blue lines on your spreadsheet there show what the grant allocation is in the home match, so it's about $335,000 a year for home.
That's through Urbana, right? That's not...
That's right.
Okay, and so...
And then the CDBG funding, you know, we get $550,000 or so annually. So there's, you know, almost $900,000 a year. So, right, if we take, say, $200,000 a year for the Lakeside redevelopment, which may be an average for, you know, four and a half years or so, then, right, it would leave some $700,000 for other projects. And remember, you know, of that, we're anticipating that we get $150,000 of that 915 from conversion of our bond cap into home funds. So that would, you know...
That's the one-time allocation, correct?
Well, we're anticipating that it's one-time. If it works the first time, I mean, there's nothing to prevent us from applying again. But we've gotten a positive indication from Ida that they would do it, but we don't know for how long. I'm sure it just depends on the kinds of programs they've got going on a statewide basis, too.
So am I correct in seeing that our contribution to the Brinshaw portion of the project, over the entire course of the project, would be $300,000?
Right. And we're proposing that $150,000, the pink line, the bond cap conversion to home funds, and then just above that, the CDBG. And we've got that broken out into $50,000 a year for three years, 2005 to 2008.
And that was their, was that roughly their request, that when they first came to us and said, we, you know, we will build 24 affordable units, and we'll need dollars? Was that the dollar figure? I have a stack of paper about this, thinking of this, and I'm trying to remember.
Well, there are a lot of different...
Esther has that stack in front of her.
Yeah. And this is a number in between some of the ones that got in that big stack.
I guess the important question is, have they been, have they said they're going to be able to do it within that, with that funding allocation?
Yeah, if you take a look in the plan, and it shows the Brinshaw spreadsheet, then you'll get an idea of the total package that they're looking at, which we've been in communication, oh, I've got the wrong one.
That's the first spreadsheet?
We've been in communication with them, and they're, they say that that's a realistic spreadsheet for their redevelopment.
Okay, all right. Future of the Kerr property, is it kind of undetermined at this point? It hasn't been allocated based on this redevelopment agreement? Or looking at, okay, so it could be that other Chodos doing that property, or it could be that Homestead elects to use some of that property, you know, comes to the city, makes a request for the property. So it's really not being determined at this point?
Right.
Okay. And then it was surprising to see that our allocation to Homestead would be, you know, $14,500 for each unit, roughly. Do we have a history of success, or do Chodos have a history of success building units with that kind of input? I guess I'm just wondering if they're actually going to be able to do it for that amount. I don't mean to question their application, I just think, as we move forward, I want to make sure that we have a realistic picture of what it's going to cost. Wondering if we have a history of success of funding at that amount. Maybe Jim can...
Yeah, Jim's here, and maybe he can address his part of the proposal. But I think we were talking for this part of existing new construction for the Homestead part.
Right. Yeah, we would be going out and purchasing homes with the money, and the 14, 5 fit with the other sources of fund for. Now, a lot, excuse me, a lot is contingent upon getting all the other funds from the Ida Trust Fund and from the Federal Home Loan Bank, and then securing the private financing. I've already had discussions with a local bank, and it's doable for putting in 50% of, if we were financing only 50% of the purchase price, they're very willing to get involved. Again, it's just a matter of making contact with the Illinois Housing Development Authority people, which I think is a doable project funding-wise, from all the funding sources, so.
So the funding's only to acquire a mortgage, is that what the funds would go towards?
50% of the funds would be used to purchase the house, and the other 50% would come from a private mortgage.
Oh, so you'd have a 50% down payment, then?
Right. Which would be a grant. And we need that level in order to, given the rents that were on the properties, to make the mortgage interest principal and taxes and insurance, make the project feasible from that point.
So when you say that there's a developer's fee, you're really talking about a management fee, is that correct?
Well, actually, no.
Since you're not developing anything, you're, I mean, you're acquiring properties, is there rehab?
That will not require a substantial amount of rehabilitation, and actually work that into the selling price, if possible, and have the seller, and have the seller do the work required before we purchase the property. So we don't get involved in some things that we really can't afford after we purchase the property. The developer fee is just, it's a fee to the developer who's taking a risk in putting the whole project together. That's what I called it, a developer fee. We've used them on our single-family properties, I think, in order for us to get involved in purchasing 33 properties, there's a lot of work involved.
Absolutely.
So that's just the, a fee we would charge for that activity.
So how do you, how do you make your bread and butter in terms of managing the properties? Does that come out of the Section 8 vouchers, or...
Yeah, that comes out of the rent.
Okay.
Right now, our properties, we don't manage our single-family properties, they're managed by a management company. But our intention is, after we do these 33, we would increase our staff in order to, for us to manage those properties and also maintain those properties. So it's a way for Homestead Corporation to increase its staff size.
So you will be managing it, self-managing the 33 properties?
Right, correctly. Yeah, currently, we pay a 10% management fee, so that would then accrue to Homestead Corporation, and we could afford then to hire additional staff.
Would you be able to extend your management to your other existing properties then? Oh, that would be very good.
Homestead Apartments, we took over management of that last April, and we're doing a good job in that regard, so that's the intention.
Okay. I think those are all my questions, thank you.
Yeah, the prices are just an estimate based on the current market value of homes that we've looked at. We've looked at a number of properties available for sale in the community. When we start purchasing the properties a year from now, we'll just have to see what the market, what the market looks like, so.
Comment, you know, one estimate, the comment that the Section 8 is an integral part of the financial package for this. The other important part is the 50% down payment. And so that's what our contribution would go for, in addition to the Ida Trust Fund contribution and the Federal Home Loan Bank. So together, being able to make a 50% down payment through grant funds, and then getting the Section 8 certificate to guarantee the rent level are the two things that make this possible.
Just think, what happens if the, since it's a competitive bid process for the Section 8 vouchers, if the vouchers aren't received?
Well, in speaking with the Housing Authority staff, and, you know, they're represented here tonight, that it's their intent to work with the community and recognize us with our Lakeside redevelopment plan. So they know that if Homestead is going to be requiring the vouchers to make this possible, that they would, when they set out that RFP, they're going to know that Homestead is going to be, and what kind of housing projects they're going to be getting into. And they can tailor their RFP to meet the model that Homestead has. You know, it's, we're trying to work hand in glove here. It's not, the Housing Authority is not going to write an RFP process that's going to conflict significantly with what Homestead wants to do. They're going to work with Homestead and say, what Homestead wants to do, that makes sense to do it, and they're going to write their RFP so that Homestead scores high on the list. And as you recall, the last time we talked about a redevelopment plan was urging the Housing Authority to give significant additional points to any Chodo, so that a Chodo application would score much, much higher than a private application.
I will say, my year, project-based subsidy is very important. If we're going to have a 20-year mortgage, if the subsidy only ran for 10 years, after the 10th year, it'd be difficult for us to house very low-income families. After the 20th year, and we have the mortgages paid off, then affordable for 50 years, 70, I mean, as long as the house is standing, it could be made, it could be affordable. And currently, right now, we have an agreement with Federal Home Loan Bank, which, not too many, we, the affordability period for Homestead Apartments is actually 30 years, and not 20, as would be required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that will remain affordable for as long as it stands as well. So we're in it for the long haul, and we don't see any reason why, but we do, can't be affordable for as long as we own the property, which would be a very long time. Ruth, did you have your hand up before?
I just wanted to say, I mean, that's just, that's the best news I've heard. To whatever extent, with this project and with other housing projects, we can make it affordable, with Homestead, with 20-year mortgages or affordability rates, I think the longer we can make them affordable, so that it's able to pay out the mortgage and then remain affordable with our Chodos in perpetuity, I think is just fantastic. And the number of homeless people in our country and in our community is not going to decline unless we continue to step up the city's involvement and willingness to address the housing crisis in our community. And I think that the work of Homestead Corporation and their work to make it more, to make housing affordable for longer periods of time is a way that, we can do that, and to the extent that the city can, is very important.
Thank you. Any further comments? Esther?
I just wanted to thank Jim and Homestead Corporation for stepping up to the plate, because that's a piece of this whole project. And I also wanted to thank our staff, community development staff, I don't know if the viewing audience can tell, but a tremendous amount of work in a fairly short period of time went into putting these documents, and I really appreciate how hard the folks have worked on this.
Mission number 2004-04-006R, a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Champaign, Urbana-Champaign County Home Consortium for fiscal year 2004-2005, the Annual Action Plan.
I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion and add the next agenda item due to potential conflict interest with my present employees.
Okay. This Ruth has recused herself because of conflicts. Well, it's that time of year, our Annual Action Plan to HUD. Again, we need to submit this by mid-May in order to receive our entitlement funding in a timely manner. The new wrinkle this year, if you will, from previous years, is some additional funding, the American Dream Down Payment Initiative. We'll talk about that a little bit later. But other than that, it's very similar to our previous years, where we look at our community development block grant funding, CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Act home funding, and how we're going to utilize those dollars. A little bit of background on the process, March 23, the Community Development Commission had a, their regular meeting, if you will, and persons and organizations that applied for home and CDBG funding, some were present and gave brief presentations and were available to answer questions. At that same meeting, staff provided a briefing and went through a draft of the Annual Action Plan, but we tagged it version 1.0, and that contains staff initial recommendations. Since that meeting, we've had, on April 6, SBC, where staff provided some adjustments to that initial draft after further consideration and analysis, and that's referred to as version 2.0. And basically, a lot of the funding adjustments from those one and two versions, the latter was an effort to try to consider some of the applications, if you will, that were submitted, and to see if we could program those applications and those funding requests into this Annual Action Plan, thinking that in subsequent years, Lakeside Terrace, you know, additional funding, and this would be a window of time to pursue those new initiatives. In wrapping up that meeting, the Community Development Commission, again, they 1.0 and recommended it be forwarded to the City Council for approval. We noted in the memo that there's two other funding resources, if you will, the Crystal Lake...
Lake Park Neighborhood Improvement Program Fund, or the NIF, and the Community Development Sync Fund, the CD Sync Fund, we refer to that in the plan. And a brief summary from the city budgrees those two, those two funds. If I could, I'd just go quickly through the adjustments that we discussed into, into this version 2.0. First is in the Community Development Block Grant section, the Neighborhood Organization Grant, or the NOG program, with $1,250 in Community Development Block Grant Funds. The other applications are funded through other sources, the Ecological Construction Laboratory, $900 of CD Sync Funds, UCAN's application funded in $1,250 from the NIF Fund, which we felt was appropriate, being the neighborhood that, that's concerned, and the E Street Development Corporation at $1,250 from the CD Sync Funds. And I see a typo there, that E Street Development did not apply for $25,000, that's $2,500. The Neighborhood Cleanup, we included a little bit of extra money from the CD Sync Fund and the NIF Fund. Again, you might recall on the public service line item and our CDBG funding, and it's continued to be pinched, and, and these additional funding opportunities or resources will help us keep that programming decision to break out Sunset Drive and the Harvey Street area sidewalk improvements. The latter there, the sidewalk improvements, to let you know that there was specific public comment made at our CDC meeting from residents in that neighborhood to address that, and Public Works has done that, and this is being done in conjunction with, with our Public Works Department. Affordable Housing, the last CDBG item, $5,000 is program for Habitat for Humanity to help with site prep and infrastructure improvements through Urbana Properties, and accumulated in some adjustments there where we, the property acquisition line item was reduced to account for the $5,000 to Habitat, and also the opportunity to put another $3,450 into public service. Again, I know that, that category always seems to be pinched, and, and that'll help us with that. Home, the home program, owner-occupied rehab, we reduced it by $28,000 in terms of home funding, but we used $28,000 from the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. So, basically, we're still doing four houses, we're funding three with home and one with the NIF, at $28,000 per unit. The Habitat for Humanity basically took the $28,000 from the program above and moved it into Habitat to help them with their new housing construction efforts. The Ecological Construction Laboratory, $25,000, was taken from the new housing construction line item and put into this specific project. The Affordable Rental Development Program, basically, the remainder of the home funds were steered into this project, and this funding amount is reflected, if you will, in the plan that we just reviewed for Lakeside Terrace, where those amounts equal the investment into Urban League's apartment units. We're still under a, a public, and any additional comments will be forwarded to, to council. We note the fiscal impact in terms of the funding we hope to receive. And let me close with the American Dream Down Payment Initiative. We've included what about that program in our annual action plan. HUD has just published the interim rule for that program, and has told us what you need to have in your annual action plan to be programmed, to be in line for that funding. And the Home Consortium of Champaign, Champaign County, and Urbana at a later date will come a more detailed plan as to how to use that down payment assistance money. But I think we're covered in terms of getting the money from HUD and including it in, in our.
Yes.
I have a question regarding the Neighborhood Organization Grant Program on page three. If one or more of the groups isn't able to use or doesn't use the funding that's being provided, does it then get split in the same, or those same proportions that it's divided now among the remaining groups, or how does that work?
That's a good point. Could account for that contingency in our plan if we desired, we could iron it out of the agreement process as well.
It seems that, except for the Ecological Construction Laboratory NOG grant for $900, which is being fully funded by the CD Sync Fund, the others have requested double the funds that they have been allocated in the annual action plan under the CDB, and so it, it seems that perhaps it would make sense to, to make up for some of that if, if one of the, one of the four groups that's being funded under this, doesn't end up using any or, I guess more likely, all of the funding that's being allocated to them.
We think in the past, we've mentioned contingencies in the AAP. Should this happen, this is the contingency.
So, if we could, I guess, suggestion, I would support them if we could provide for that. Thank you.
There might be some other organizations applying for some of these funds. Example, the last two or three has not applied, so there was a possibility that they might apply this year.
No, I, well, no.
Just do the fifteenth, all right? Fourteen, fifteen?
Well, there's another, another round of the social service funding or operations.
Jim? I have a question on, page three. On the Neighborhood Cleanup? He said that, in order to fully fund, they anticipate continuing this program at its current level of activity, okay, so much money will be budgeted to meet the anticipated program expenses, and that the program will not continue at the current level, and they're only going to do it once a year. Is this correct or incorrect?
Well, we heard feedback at Ucap meetings to that effect, at staff discussions with Public Works and community development, we felt like it still would be beneficial to fully consider continuing as it is. We always get a significant amount of junk and debris and would hate to see it not picked up and left as a remainder in the neighborhood.
So, it still will be twice a year?
That's what we were planning on.
Okay.
I move approval of the resolution approving the City of Urbana-Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County Home Consortium.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, approved, or moving this to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, yes, Daniel.
I'd just like to speak to the motion briefly. Council members may remember that when I first got on council, I believe, we talked about our new home development programs, and I mentioned at the time that we really need to look at energy efficiency when developing. So, last fall, I and the Permaculture Project convened a symposium of the Urban League, Habitat for Humanity, Homestead Development Corporation, and the ECO Lab to talk about this, and ECO Lab being funded is one of the pieces that has come out of that symposium. So, I want to thank staff for helping to make that happen, working with the other organizations to try to kind of introduce sustainable housing practices in their development practices. So, not only in funding ECO Lab are we supporting the introduction of solar housing in our portable housing programs, which I'm very heartened by, but we are also introducing some of these concepts to, well, Homestead certainly has done some energy-efficient building and is interested, and I know Habitat and the Urban League are very interested in working with ECO Lab to develop potentially partnerships to, to develop homes that include much more energy-efficient building practices than they have used in the past. And I, I want to make a note to council members what I mean when I say energy efficiency. For example, ECO Lab built their first building out in East Urbana, I believe they're going to have a, is it opening in May for ECO Lab? There's going to be a, open for their first house. Well, the person who lives in that house has reported that she is spending over the, she, she basically will spend an average of $20 a month for heating, call of her electricity and gas prices, basically. So, any, any kind of, the, the energy going into the house is $20 a month on average, I think it goes up to 40 in the winter, and it's down to, I think you can't actually spend less than $10, $12 a month, because just to have and to get service every month is a certain base price, I believe it's on the level of $12 to $15. Well, she was living close to $12 to $15 a month when, when there wasn't, it was kind of, when it wasn't, you know, deep, deep pool season, and, so when we talk about energy efficiency, we're talking about basically families who are now paying $200 a month in utilities in the winter, which is what, you know, in, in the worst-case scenario in winter, in a house hundred square feet or so, which is the size house we're looking at, $200 a month, we're now looking at something on the level of $40 a month. So, we're talking about a fifth of the energy cost. So, when it comes to, you know, do we pay Illinois Power, or do we buy school supplies? Do we pay Illinois Power, or do we buy food? In, in these scenarios, we're talking about buying school supplies, buying other essentials, and not necessarily being tied to paying high energy costs, which we, which we have in this area with our hot summers and our cold winters. And that is a cost that doesn't go away, like, once you build the house, the cost is there for that family. So, I feel like it's our responsibility as a committee, as a council, to do whatever we can to bring down those costs, and the ECO Lab has a demonstrated project, they can bring down those costs, and by doing a project in this next year, they hope to model that both for the council, the larger community, for Champaign, who will be doing funding in the future, and for other development organizations. So, I, I'm, I'm very pleased that despite the number crunching we've had to do to make Lakeside Terrace work, that it didn't mean that some of these more innovative programs that really have long-term consequences for low-income families were not squeezed out in the process.
I just, I have a quick question. Where are an ECO Lab house located at? I wasn't aware that this project was underway.
It's east of Urbana, it's actually in the Scottswood subdivision, so it's actually outside of the city limits, and it's interesting, location was chosen in part because of, that, because of Urbana codes, and one of the goals in this is to, and I think ECO Lab will be working closely with CD to make sure that, do these kinds of projects in city limits and be up to code. So, I believe, I forget the name of it, it's not Bradley, but?
Two, six and a half, Brady Lane.
Brady, Brady Lane.
Thanks.
Well, certainly welcome to the open house in September to take a look at it.
Yes, Ruth.
Just quickly, I wanted just a program to also work with Housing Authority, I just know, and the, the property is not, the, the utility bills are horrendous, and if there's a way to, to work with properties that are already, have already been constructed and are inefficient, and whether that means putting in solar panels or that sort of thing, but also doing with the Housing Authority and their properties, I think would be wonderful and would help extremely low-income households who desperately need assistance, and, and the work could really, really show how households who already have energy and efficient housing can make improvements. Thank you.
Any further comments? We need a motion to send this to council.
I believe there's already a motion in a second.
Okay, excuse me. And all, all those in favor of sending this to council, recommendation for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2004-04-042, ordinance approving a modification to the City of Urbana and Urbana-Champaign County Home Consortium, oh, no, wait a minute, yes, that's right, annual action plan amendment number two and fiscal year 2002, action plan amendment three. Has, has previously passed, amended. Is that right?
The Community Development Commission has reviewed this, and we wanted to just bring it here for, for final approval. Basically, it amounts to the, the matter that in '03-'04, we included $130,000 for our streetlight project, and we actually spent that money a year prior to the beginning of that fiscal year. And to remedy that, HUD indicated that it'd be just as easy to amend your annual action plan to show that you provided that money in the fiscal year that you spent it. Of course, what that did in our accounting review is ended up, we, we still had $130,000 at '03-'04 fiscal year, which was an opportunity that at the staff level, we considered would be helpful to purchase some real estate that, that could aid with Lakeside Terrace and other affordable housing opportunities. So, nutshell, in the '02-'03 annual action plan, we include or add $130,000 for the streetlight project. The next year annual action plan, '03-'04, we strike the streetlight proj, new project for property acquisition for the same amount of money, for the $130,000. Again, this is still under a public comment period, and we've asked the council, but at their May 3 council meeting, and we'll certainly bring back any, any comments we receive, we haven't received any comments at our, our public hearing, and, you know, just to note on the fiscal impacts, I think one of the, there's no, there's no immediate terms of funding availability, but we did learn a little bit about how we want to better manage some of our, our funding and our accounting. You'll notice in the annual action plan we just talked about, in our carryover project, there's a large placeholder in, in bold that says, "These are estimates only." We, we got a little sideways in terms of looking at that, and also, there's no program income estimated in the annual action plan, and talking with the accounting, we'll figure out what that program income was and then budget it at the beginning of the next fiscal year, rather than try to sort it out midstream in the years to come, and we, we won't see these swings of funding, if you will.
Thank you.
I move that we send this to the May 3 council meeting with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move, send this through the May 3 council meeting with a recommendation for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2004-04-07R. It's a resolution evidencing the intention of the City of Urbana-Champaign County, Illinois, to reserve a 2004 private activity bond for the purpose of furthering neighborhood initiatives.
Again, springtime comes, our, what we're going to do with our bond cap, you'll note under the background on page two, the per capita income has increased to $80 per income, or rather, our population has increased just a bit. That resulted in Urbana breaking the $3 million barrier in terms of our bond cap allocation, and it notes there, as, as we've seen in years before, the provisions for, for using the bond cap per the IRS guidelines. We note the, the program options, program number one would be to reserve the bond cap for the purpose of furthering neighborhood initiatives, and basically, this is the same provision we spoke to earlier in the annual, excuse me, in the Lakeside Terrace Plan, where we would hope to use our bond cap as a funding mechanism to help with Lakeside Terrace. I note in the memo on page three that the City of Champaign, of course, last year with their bond cap, and was able to realize funding to help them with Birch Village, we hope to do something similar, and that's basically the staff recommendation. To go through the balance of the options we have, programs two through five, three, program two is a sister Urbana, this has been a, a very effective homebuyer program. A lot of the banks have used this, and a lot of homebuyers have benefited from it. The neat thing this year is that, in that program, just The neat thing this year is that, in that program description on page four notes that Stern Brothers, who helps put this program together, has indicated that for 2004, they feel like they can still support for, for this program. So even if we don't cede any bond cap to them, they'll still be able to entertain applications from individuals and our local lenders to support. Program three, the Illinois Housing Development Authority Home Buyer Assistance Programs. These are basically the, they are grouped into the first-time homebuyer program, which is a below-market rate mortgage, if you will. We've had limited success with that and do not recommend ceding cap to that. Program four, the Mortgage Credit Certificate on page five. While there's considerable benefit to the homebuyer, again, we've seen limited effectiveness and it really doesn't address the down payment that seems to be the most common impediment to, to our local homebuyers. So ceding cap to that. The Home Equity Loan Program or Help through Ida. We funded that program last year and saw very, very little use of that program, and we do not recommend funding or ceding any program. CDC has reviewed these options and concur with staff recommendations to reserve our 2004 bond cap for the furthering neighborhood initiatives, basically Terrace.
Any questions? Danielle.
I'm not sure how this is, since we're looking at homebuyer assistance program, how it's related to Lakeside Terrace. I'm stuck, I don't quite understand that.
Well, I went through this rather quickly. The provisions, the IRS provisions that govern the use of bond cap provide options. And one of the options to cede the cap to a homebuyer program, of which there were four different ones, three with Ida and one with Stern Brothers. Or we can reserve the cap for other neighborhood developments related. And so that's, we've never done that before, but that's the option we'd like to pursue. So we're sort of foregoing the homebuyer initiatives and instead moving toward a, a more unique opportunity.
Assistance programs assist Urbana, the Illinois Housing Development, or the first-time homebuyer program, mortgage, mortgage credit certificate. These are programs that we would kind of put on hold for now and use that bond cap, cede the bond cap so that we could fund Lakeside Terrace. Is that the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that makes sense, given that a lot of these programs are, are set at interest rates that actually are not above, much below market rate right now, anyway. I'm sure they have been useful in the past and hopefully they'll be useful in the future as the economy warms up some. But it does make sense that they wouldn't necessarily be the best use of our bond cap at this point.
Any further questions? We have a motion in a second, yes?
No, I, nothing.
Motion in a second to send this to recommendation for approval. Did Milton make the motion?
I wasn't aware that we had one.
We need a motion.
I move approve, I move we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we have a recommendation for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Next item on the agenda is one that has been delayed sometime because of the late time and the, it's ordinance number 2004-03-026, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Regarding Maximum and Pay-by-Mail Minimum Fines. Steve, will you?
Sure. I'll take the initial summary and then pass it off to the mayor if you want to make some comments, mayor, set it away. Basically, this ordinance addresses the current pay-by-mail schedule in our Code of Ordinances. Currently, the way our system is set up is that if a police officer comes across some, some kind of behavior that constitutes an offense under our Code of Ordinances, the officer has a discretion to write a ticket for that. The ticket can be either of two types. It can be a ticket that requires the alleged offender to appear in court and answer to the charge there in court. If that's the case, then my office prosecutes that matter in court. The officer also has a discretion under the pay for those items that are listed in the pay-by-mail schedule to issue a citation that allows the alleged offender to simply pay a ticket, so to speak, for the offense within 14 days of the, of that citation having been issued. Section 1-18 of the Code of Ordinances sets some, sets a schedule of minimum fines that governs what that, what that payment within 14 days would have to be in order for the matter to court. And as my memo summarizes, that schedule was established well over 10 years ago and really not been updated at all with a few exceptions. The range of minimum fines in the City of Urbana for those various kinds of ordinance violations is $50, $75, and for a couple of offenses, $100. At the administration's attention, via a couple of sources, primarily some neighborhood groups, as well as the Urbana Police Department, that the levels of fines in Urbana are substantial as for, in the City of Champagne for similar or identical types of violations. And then that was causing some problems with enforcement and, and perception that, that the, the fines were no longer sufficient as a deterrent for the particular types of offenses. And so what this ordinance really does at its core is, I think it's important to recognize at the outset that all these numbers have a certain level of arbitrariness to them. There's no science to any of this. And I suppose the same thing can be said of, of what a judge does when a judge hears a matter at sentencing in court. If the judge has a, a range of fines to impose from 100 bucks to 750 bucks, the judge has to somehow arrive at a number. And in a sense, that's what's being asked of the council here today, is establish a range and establish minimums for particular types of offenses. In addition to amending that schedule of minimum fines, the ordinance also proposes to amend the maximum from the current maximum in the Code of Ordinances. It's currently at $500 per offense. The proposal is to bring it up to 750, which is the level that state law currently authorizes municipalities to assess. Home rule municipalities can go above that. In fact, the City of Urbana has for certain kinds of, I think, Boca Cold violations. But this proposal does not propose to bring anything else up above 750. It does propose to establish a cap of 750 for every one of those types of ordinances. The proposal also includes a suggestion for an automatic escalator so that we don't have the same kind of erosion problems that we've had over the past, I don't know, 13 years or so under the current system. The proposal is for an escalator of 3% per year, rounded down to the nearest whole-dollar amount, so that the, the numbers make some sense. And then lastly, the proposal also has some suggestions for cleanups, which show up in the strike-through underline version of that, of that schedule of fines that's in your packet. On that, I noticed a couple of typos as I was going through this, and one of them was pointed out to me by our fire chief. Strike-through underline version of the schedule, looks like this, proposes to, to strike section 11-19, open burning, which currently has a fine of $50. The typo there is that the only thing that should have been struck out in that line was that should be, everything else should remain there. 11, section 11-19 should still say open burning, and the suggestion is to change that minimum fine from $50 to $135. I also had about, under chapter 10 in that same schedule, sections 10-3, 10-5, 10-6, and 10-7, all of which relates to the types of violations. The, the strike-through underline version of the schedule shows them all being struck out. There's no commentary on, on the reason for that in the schedule itself. My memo addresses that, and the last paragraph points out that those, those particular items over the last couple of years, when we did nuisance ordinance types of revisions, were renumbered and recodified in chapter 11. And so that's the only reason that those are being suggested. As part of that renumbering, those particular sections were put into a separate escalating fines provision that we had for repeat offenders under that. And so for that reason, they do not reappear in this proposal as chapter 11 types of violations. And I think that covers what I had to say. Mayor?
This originally came up in some discussions with neighborhood folks where I live, in the Wester Banner Neighborhood Association. And they've been meeting and talking about keeping houses, homes, and the quality of life in our neighborhood. And one of the, the concerns that kept coming up repeatedly is the loud party, alcohol and loud music featured prominently. And, you know, there've been several of those, and, well, they're frequent occurrences in, in the Wester Banner. And so I've got some input from them indicating that they would like to see some higher fines for the alcohol and violations. And then when Steve and I started to take a look at it, we thought that probably all of the fine structure needed to be reviewed, and that's the, this proposal in front of you today. It was originally a, an alcohol and loud music concern, but I think it's, it is best to, to review the entire thing and, and through our, our fines in a systematic fashion, which is what Steve and I have attempted to do with this proposal. So other than that, I think Steve's memo says the proposal very well, so I'm just hoping it up for questions at this point.
Mayor, can I ask you, does this have anything to do with that fine for underage drinking or the 287 in the champagne?
Yeah, this is, you know, you'll see that there in the chart that the chapter three is the alcohol clippers. And yeah, there's several alcohol-related offenses listed here, most of which are fined of $75. And the proposal here is to go to match champagne. That's, you know, one of the things at the neighborhood level that's been a concern is, you know, aren't we encouraging alcohol ordinance viola if the fine is so much lower than what it is in Champagne? And so through the input that I got from the Neighborhood Association, that's why Steve and I have set those at $280, which is what they are in Champagne. And those include alcohol violations affect the, are targeted at the operators and others are targeted at the consumers of the alcohol. So hours of operation, sales to minors, transporting alcohol on a motor, identification cards, you know, carrying open alcohol in, on public property, consumption by minors, you know. So there's a wide variety of offenses listed here.
Have we got a motion on this so far? No? I guess we need a motion to send this to council before we do any, any discussion.
Don't make the motion to send this to council without a recommendation.
We need, have a second. I'll second that. For the purpose of discussion and certainly, do you want to talk to the, speak to it?
Yeah, I can say a couple of things. I know several council members have things to say. One is, I understand where this came from, and where it came from makes a lot of sense because I've heard very similar things. But where, where it went doesn't make sense. That's basically my summary. So where it came from is, there's certain things that where the fine structure of those things does not adequately prohibit those kinds of activities, where that on almost every instance, we are quadrupling, doubling, tripling, or in some instances, I believe, quadrupling fines after 10-year period. And I have some concerns with doing that. I, and some of those, and I've had a difficult time being objective, actually. This is one of those things where Mr. Holtz is right, this is not, there's no science to this, it's not objective. It just so happens that I work with young people, as teenagers mostly. Some of these fines are really specifically the kinds of things that teenagers have to deal with. And I, and I know that teenagers make the minimum wage and that the minimum wage has not drupled in 10 years. In fact, it's, it's barely raised at all. So when I look at some of the things that I know, the people I work with are going to be facing, they, you know, it's the same fine to be cruel to an animal as it is to loiter. I don't really, I mean, you know, if you look at kind of equivalence, these, a lot of, it's, you know, it's an equivalent fine to, to ride your bike on the sidewalk as it is to, you know, do a number of things that, that, that actually hurt people or involve theft or other kinds of activities that are really on a much different caliber than, you know, riding your bike on the sidewalk. So let me just, so I, I have some concerns about, do intend to, to bring forward an alternative resolution next week, and I will do my best to include that in people's packets. And, but I, that resolution would actually look at the places where we really have a, solve the problem, rather than solving the problem plus a bunch of things that actually I don't feel are a problem currently. And particularly, I, I feel like the kinds of fines that we end up putting people in when they do things that are very nominal kinds of things, when we, when we, you know, raise it to something like $135 for a ticket, I don't think we really understand what that means. This is not a, you know, it's not like the progressive tax. It's, you know, if somebody pays, makes $5.25 an hour, they pay $135 to ride their bike on the sidewalk, just like someone who makes $100,000 a year and they ride their bike on a sidewalk and they pay $50. We have to look at what kinds of consequences we have for people for some of these things and to really make, again, the punishment fit the crime. And in some of these cases, it just, it does not fit the crime at all. So nuisance issues, I agree with where this came from. I think some of the, under miscellaneous offenses and provisions, there are very assault, battery, and other theft and things like that, that I think are serious offenses and that probably the fine structure as is, does not adequately address those problems. But I think there are other things that, that I just feel like they...
Mr. Hayes.
I'd like to mention that, as far as I'm concerned, you know, people should be allowed to drink at age, because that's where I'm coming from, New York, to drink at age 18. Now, it used to be 18 in the state of Illinois. It was put on the ballot, and the young people did not get out and vote. And so the law was raised up to 21, okay? And I'm trying to make a point. I know there are gonna be some instances where people want to, the fines for some of these kids, talking about they only make $5.25 an hour. And who's gonna pay the fine? You know, the parents barely have enough money to send them to school, which is okay. But we also need to keep in mind that somebody's gonna have to explain to them students that these acts of disobedience to the law that they commit are premeditated. Whereas, they know ahead of time that they're breaking the law. And it's not just the idea, it's the idea that they're putting the owners of these establishments in jeopardy. Because in some cases, they have to not only pay the fine, but they also have been known to have to close for a couple of days, as if it was the owner's fault. Whereas if the, if the young people under 21 hadn't, this wouldn't happen. So I'm not saying reduce the fine. I'm not saying not to reduce the fine, but I am saying that we can't tiptoe to the tulips on us without message to the young people that they committed a crime, but they knew ahead of time the crime that, that they committed. So you'd hit them between the eyes and get their attention.
Thank you. Ms. Pat?
Thank you. Well, I respectfully disagree. I don't know how a bunch of people who themselves consume alcohol can incite when another person consumes alcohol simply because that person is younger than, than others. consumes alcohol simply because that person is younger than others. When I was 19, I drank. When he drank, it was legal, as Mr. Hayes pointed out, when we were 19 to drink. So that made it an okay thing. Pardon? But today, it's not. And so now it's a bad thing. It's a crime. The reason that the fine's only $75 for underage drinking in the city of Urbana is because on at least two previous occasions, when the administration has asked the city council to raise the fine, the city council has refused. I think it's because the majority of city council members have been opposed to fining a behavior that shouldn't even really be against the law. And I believe the reason the drinking age got knocked back up to 21 was because the threatened states with loss of highway funds unless the drinking age was raised. I don't know if anyone had a chance to read tonight's paper yet. You'll see on the front page of tonight's News Gazette, a picture of three sisters who are all serving in Iraq, was killed last Friday. That's why the story was in the paper. And she was 20 years old. So we can go on pretending the 20-year-olds are infants when it comes to using them as revenue generators, but we certainly, when it comes to dying for this country. Which, by the way, was, I think, the main reason the law, the drinking age was changed and lowered to, actually, it was 19 state law in Urbana, it was 18, was because of so, more than a decade of people who were under the age of 21 dying in service of our country and the gross hypocrisy of a population of people over 21, that they be treated like children when it comes to the sale of alcohol and be treated like adults when it comes to everything else. There was a story in last, speaking of newspapers, in last Wednesday's Daily Y Night, it was covering a talk students, Bill Riley, on Tuesday about alcohol, students and alcohol consumption. Bill Riley has been, according to this article, has been studying the issues of alcohol 38 years, and pretty much in that time, nothing's changed. Surveys show that 86% of students consume alcohol before they are 21. And 2% of students do not start consuming alcohol until after they are, and 12% of students do not consume alcohol. We can try to change, we could try to stop students from drinking alcohol, even though 86% do, even though college students have been drinking alcohol for centuries. In fact, probably as long as there has been college students, college students have been drinking alcohol. The fact that they're adults might have something to. I want to clear something about, clarify something about the neighborhood. The Wester Band Neighborhood Association did not take any position on this, has never taken a position on this. I hear endlessly, to the point of it seriously, deny life from people in my neighborhood. And this particular subject of the drinking, of the fines for underage drinking has, I think, in total, in the last year, I've heard from five people asking for us to change. But I do hear from my neighbors about much more often is the problem with noise. And, you know, the mayor says noise and alcohol, those two are together. Gee, how many people under the age of 21 are drinking? People do complain and have been complaining for the 10 years, to me, for the 10 years I've been in the city council, about the thorough inadequacy of the city's response to noise complaints. And things, every year, we have a very major event that involves amplified sound, loud, live bands, and disturbance of the peace affecting many blocks. And we, the city has yet to come up with a way to respond to that. We had the big candy club event where, for a mile area, people were treated to excessive profanity, shouted through their windows, set to music until 11:30 at night. But, and afterward, the chief of police and the mayor pleasure at the fact that there was no underage drinking. I couldn't give a hoot about self-defense. It was bothering me, that's how much noise there was. We had the incident, I don't know how this happened, with Neighbor House, they were setting up a band at 7 o'clock at night, 7 o'clock at night, and a neighbor called at 10 after 7 saying, "There's a live band setting up on the lawn. Can you do something?" The police came out twice, no tickets written, it was still going on. By 10 o'clock, one of the neighbors who called told me that he was told he was the 10th caller. I've shared the story with you before. And finally, at 11, it was either 11 or 11:30, after the police had written a ticket, or a few tickets, finally, the noise stopped. We've had individual incidents where, again, the police, they show up, if there's underage drinking, they write tickets. If there's no underage drinking, it seems they're not concerned about it. In fact, I get the feeling that this administration, well, not just this administration, there seems to be a philosophy here that, and went back before Todd was mayor, and that 20-year-olds drinking is evil, it's a crime we have to wipe out. Disturbing the peace, even if 1,000 people are bothered, is no biggie. To me, it should be the other way around. I don't care how much people drink, if they do it quietly. And people who are making noise are hurting other people, and we should, we should do something to stop them. Last October, as recently as last October, we had, if you remember the block party incident, there was a real block party planned on the 700 block of California. It ended up, it ended up working out okay. It actually got rained out, they went to Paradiso, no problem. Then there was the phony block party, which was really the, this incidence involving two live bands that had advertised in the newspaper and invited people from all over. My neighbors tend to be more tolerant than one might think, and people don't usually start calling the police till after 11:00 PM. I don't know how late, Penny Hubert said that her guests at her bed and breakfast checked out at 2:00 AM. The police had been out at least twice. I don't know that any tickets were written for noise, and playing and playing and playing. When I brought it up at city council the Monday after the event, the mayor said that there was a public safety concern, that if the, if the bands, concerned that they stopped the bands from playing, that they would have a crowd control problem. And so they let the people keep breaking the law. Actually, I think that's, excuse me, mayor said it for a point of order. I am speaking, you do not, someone who's speaking just because you disagree. You'll get your turn. You'll get your turn.
I'm barely finished.
I think, when I heard that, I did not think, oh gee, that's a silly excuse. I thought, okay, that's a real serious, what can we do here at the city? What can we do? What can the police department do so that they can control these situations where there is a large number of people and where there is excessive amount of amplified, other excessive noises disturbing folks, to be able to quiet it down? So we don't just accept the fact that however many, 20 nights a year, some two or three block area is going to be disturbed until well into the late night and early hours, and that we just can't do anything about it. That is where I would much rather see the attention go to trying to do something about these problems that really are a problem, and to not, and to not try to, to claim we're addressing it by coming up with this. Raising the fine, one of the fines in here is for noise. I'm all for raising the fine for noise to $185, but I'm not real optimistic that that is going to solve the problem. And I also don't want to sound like I'm critical of the police, like they can't do anything. I'm, you know, there's a murder, the police arrest people. I don't know, I don't know how they find the people. There was a woman raped the other day, but they caught the guy. I don't know how the police do it. I'm amazed at what they do, for criticize the police for not responding to something like a noise complaint because they were busy doing more important things. But we do have a problem for which we, the city, the police department have not yet devised an adequate response, and that burdened the amount of these fines.
Ms. Pat, you think that this fine fee, or this fee schedule deals with the noise problem?
What I'm saying is that it's, it does not deal with the noise problem adequately. I don't, I don't take issue with raising the fine to $185 for noise. In fact, I will support that, but it's, but we need, we need to be able to do more. And I'm not even sure exactly what the problem is in addressing the, I don't understand why the police show up and shut it down. Say, "You're making too much noise, be quiet." And why we keep having these incidents where that just doesn't happen. It just doesn't happen.
Maybe, reading, you can propose something that's more effective as far as providing standards.
Well, if I could, I'd probably be chief of police, but I'm not qualified for the job, the very reason is because I don't know things about that. But I am going to make one motion, and that is to amend the motion on the Sections One and Section Seven of this ordinance. I know a lot of folks didn't bring them with. Section One is the liquor violations, one raising the fine to $280. And Section Seven is the automatic escalator of minimum fines. That is the section that the fines increase 3% annually without specific council action. Second.
Say that again.
Sections, deleting Sections One and Seven of the ordinance. Section One is the one that raises the underage drinking fine to dollars. And Section Seven is the section that has all fines go up 3% annually.
Are you deleting, you're making?
That's a motion to amend, the motion on the floor is to send this whole thing to council and amend it to take out Sections One and Seven.
Now, Mayor, you wanted to respond to Ms. Pat's comments.
Yeah, I do want to respond. And some of what Ms. Pat was indicating as occurrences simply not true. One, where the, a loud party on California was less than half a block from my house, and I was there personally, the officers did go shut the music down, not, you know, saying, "We have a problem with crowd dispersal." And there was a huge crowd there, so there was a problem with what's the crowd going to do and so forth. But the music was stopped virtually immediately, as soon as the officer was able, this band was playing at, God only knows how many discos, but it was, now, and, you know, after being there and watching the crowd slowly disperse for a while, I went back home, and as I said, it was a half a block, did not start up. Now, there may have been crowd noise that would have kept other neighbors in the more immediate area up, probably drinking from the three or four kegs that this party, this home had outside, and where people were helping themselves to beer out in the yard. That was probably the source of some of the noise. And people just carrying on a conversation, even in conversational tones, can be disturbing at hours when you're trying to go to bed, when people in our neighborhood go to sleep, you know, are in bed by 11 o'clock. So I can certainly understand that there may have been some localized more noise, but I know for a fact that there was not amplified noise, blast. And when the officers got there, they did quiet it down. Now, I'm not sure exactly who was ticketed or if anybody was ticketed. I certainly think in that kind of a situation, if nobody was ticketed, I mean, they certainly should have been. But the officers are able to go in and shut, shut loud music down at that hour of the night or any hour of the day if it's not, if it's a noise violation. The other thing that I want to, and, you know, I'm the first to agree that I wish there was a good way of addressing the noise violations. Our ordinance is set up and are right now, including a contract with the university police for the Party Patrol, as it's called, which is university, student-trained by the university police to be the first responders to loud parties. They are not able to, by contract and by policy, to issue tickets. They are able to issue only. And so our policy has been, or to the extent, largest extent possible, where we think it's going to be an effective measure, is to warn first and ticket second. As Ms. Pat ought to know, since she's been present at some of the neighborhood meetings that I have been, where we've discussed the issue of how long does a warning last, the police department is making some changes. And it's, so that right now, we're testing out a time period where the warning would last for a period of two weeks rather than just over the weekend, so that we have a more effective way of issuing a ticket to repeat offenders when they have already received a warning within two weeks. And the diligence of the police department has, has been relatively effective. There, there have been fewer noise violations over the last several months, in fact, probably the last year or so, since, you know, we've been trying to work in addressing as many of the loud parties as possible. Now, is that, I mean, in my mind, we shouldn't have any repeat offenders because that, that that's something that we're very serious about. You know, Ms. Pat makes a good point that, you know, loud music violations are down the totem pole. So if there is a serious crime, that a call about a loud party next door, you know, may not get addressed immediately if our officers are doing something else. But the measures that we have taken have shown a decrease in the number of loud noise are reported to us, at least. And I know a lot of people, you know, sit in bed or lay in bed, hoping the music will go away without making a phone call, because, you know, most people are, takes a certain level of energy, and when you're half asleep, to get up and dial the phone and complain about, you'll be a good citizen and just stop the music at a reasonable hour. But sometimes that just doesn't work. So we are doing, we have been addressing it through the police department and administratively to the greatest extent possible. We do specifically need a higher fine as a, as a tool to be able to address the noise ordinance, or the noise violation, posing $185. You know, we've heard from people in the neighborhood, you know, that people at a party will just pass a hat, they get a noise violation, they pass the hat, they get the money for the violation, and, you know, go on about their business. And so it's been a relatively painless fine in the past, and I'm glad to hear that there is some support for raising that a significant amount.
Yes, Ms. Wyman.
Yes, I'd like to speak in support of the motion to amend the main motion, that is to take out the liquor violations, increase in fines, and then the automatic escalator of minimum fines. My, I have two main reasons, then that's mostly with regard to the liquor violations issue. And that is the idea of status crimes, that based on your status, you're a criminal. And in this case, with the liquor violations, if you're 18 or 19 or 20, you're a criminal for drinking alcohol. If you're 21, same amount or less of alcohol, you're not a criminal. And that's my reason for supporting the motion to amend and taking away the increase in the fine for the liquor crime. I, with the issue of, I think that the increase in the noise violation fine is fine, appropriate, and I support that because, again, it deals with interfering with other people's enjoyment. And I think it makes sense to address that issue to, and increase the fines so that, so that people can continue or can enjoy their peaceful and quiet enjoyment of their premises and of their neighbor. The other thing is, in dealing with status crimes and the issue of being a minor, being under 21, or being under 18, when it deals with curfews of minors and being, having to pay a fine for that, I would like to best and hereby make a motion to amend, the motion to amend, to take out the increase in fines under Section 15-63, which calls for a curfew, from which calls for an increase from the current $75 fine to $135.
Just as a parliamentary note, I don't have my checklist here. I'm not sure that you can move to amend the motion to amend. Maybe the proper, proper approach is to have the vote on the motion to amend, and then can make another motion to amend as well.
Okay. Or I should ask the mover if she would accept as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I certainly will.
Okay.
That would be fine.
Yes. And I was the secondor of that original motion to amend, so I think I've spoken enough to that. Thank you.
You'll do?
I would just ask the mover and the secondor if they would consider a further friendly There are, basically, there are three minor offenses, loitering, disorderly conduct, I'm sorry, four fireworks and the curfew, and I believe Ms. Wyman ending the curfew. How about also leaving loitering and disorderly conduct and fireworks at the $75 level? Do you accept that amendment as a friendly?
Yes.
Okay. And then, also under, there are some crimes that are really quite serious crimes. I don't know if you've ever been a witness to, but a fight is a very, very serious disruption of the public peace and the public order and intimidates, and it's a very serious of the public peace and the public order, and intimidates, and it's a very serious offense, as are a number of these other things, such as breaking and entering, theft. And so for the remaining provisions of Chapter 15, would you consider a friendly amendment to raise the rest of them instead of 180?
The rest of them?
May I suggest something here at this point? Seems like Milton has an idea about raising some. Esther and Ruth have ideas about deleting some. Ms. Tenawith has some ideas about looking at this more thoughtfully and proposing something at the next meeting. Suppose we wait, gather our thoughts, I mean, there's a lot to think about here, and I don't, but suppose we thoughts, and at the next meeting, at the council meeting, propose our changes, as we might think they would best be served the city. And I would make a motion to that effect, if that's... Can we do that while there's an amendment on the floor?
Well, we're still in the middle of a friendly amendment by Milton, I think.
Let me see what their response is to the friendly amendment.
All right, okay. Yes, I was trying to refer, Milton still...
What's the response to the friendly amendment?
Actually, Joe just suggested, but you listed too many things for, I mean, if you look at them all, I'm not sure you want to raise every one of those to 280. So I would rather not accept that friendly amendment, and suggest we make another amendment to add, to raise, once to the, leaving at 75, loitering, disorderly conduct, fireworks, and curfew for minors. Can we just leave it at that and make a separate motion to raise that long list a little more carefully?
Sure.
So that would leave the motion, the motion to amend right now would be, those underage drinking plus loitering, disorderly conduct, fireworks, and curfew for minors will all be left at 75.
I had a question from Ms. Pat, based on your motion, and that is, it seems as though, is this correct, that the result of your motion would keep everything, all the fines under Chapter 3 as is?
Chapter 3.
Chapter 3 alcoholic liquors. As is, meaning at the $75 level, except for carrying open container, which is now at 50.
Yes, actually would have that effect, yes.
So, think that hours of operation of a bar, if they are violated, that they should only pay a $75 fine?
No. What, my motion, because you went ahead and moved the ordinance, which wasn't what I thought you were going to do tonight, I thought you were going to propose alternative, but since you moved the whole ordinance, what I wanted to do was the sections of the ordinance that should, of the raising to 280. And then, if someone else wanted to go back and make motions to raise from 75, but to a different amount, so I was just trying to keep it simple. And partly, everyone's focusing on, are we raising 280? It doesn't appear there's any support on this council for that, so how about we let the public know that already, rather than make people keep coming back to meetings, since this is the second meeting that we have. That was my thinking.
I would, I put into the proposers, myself included, which is that actually, hearing, I have a number of things, and I don't want to just keep adding to what's being said. I also want, I wanted to get something out to council so that they could respond, was not able, and that was my thought for next week, but actually, I wonder if there are actually conflicts in what we're proposing. Perhaps, one thing we could do is to send of our desired changes to staff, and have them write something up that embodies these changes, and we review it for discussion and not for vote. That way, we actually can see what it is on the table, all the different pieces. I mean, I almost, we don't have a mechanism by which we collectively author something, and doing it on council floor, committee floor, is a disaster. So my recommendation is trying to collectively author something, and instead designate a staff member where we send everything to that person, and they write up the proposal.
Well, the problem with that is, you don't know what's going to have a majority and what's not, and so, you know, if, so the way we're doing it tonight and go amendment by amendment is fine, and then if, but if we want to have a little more time, we can send this to another committee meeting, rather than the council meeting next week, and at that point, then people would have specific amendments that they could have in mind, and, you know, just make them one at a time, or in groups, and then have the council act. But just since to a staff member, does not mean that they're going to have a majority to include in the proposing, so it's better to make the amendments and vote them up or down.
So perhaps a council member could designate the, it's just a matter of, we can draft something, the idea of sending it to committee is a great one, and it would be great to actually have something before us that everyone has had some input on, and not do it on council.
Well, yeah, what, I mean, for the ones that we want to act on tonight, that's fine. The people want to propose before the next committee meeting, you can send in to myself or to Steve, and then, so that people can see those ahead of time, so that they know what's going to be proposed, and they can think about it for a few days before, you know, just hearing it for the first time on the floor of the council. And so that may be the way to do it. We can have one, you know, one person that all of those suggestions go to, and then, you know, they'll pack it, so that people have a chance to see it.
Yeah, was my recommendation.
That's a sound idea.
Is it possible for me to withdraw my motion? If I withdraw it, do the amendments, what happens to the amendment, the motion to amend?
Yeah, your motion.
Okay, I would like to withdraw my motion.
And so, and then all the friendly amendments and everything else is gone?
Okay.
I understand. So we're back at not having a motion, the item's been called up, but there's no pending motion at all?
May I say something? Suggestion is a very good one, it's flexible, but it requires the majority rule, and so it combines the mechanism that we do have for coming up with a final solution, but also uses format that we have for debate and for sharing ideas. And that, perhaps if we select one person here who we might forward our ideas to, if that's...
Why don't we, Steve's got this on his, so if we, people want to make suggestions and get them to Steve, and then we can put it in the form of a memo before the next committee meeting, if that's what the council wants to do. Now, I didn't mean to, I mean, if the council's ready to act, or the committee's ready to act on certain things tonight, why, by all means, go ahead and do so, but if you're not ready to do that, well, that's fine, too.
There have been some good suggestions made, but I think you're right. Steve is the logical person. Good suggestions and good concerns, and we all understand that, I think, but we need more time to reflect on it.
Mayor, if I can suggest, on your approach, really, all that I would be doing is regurgitating what everybody sends me.
Right.
So another possibility, write up a paragraph about your view about this particular kind of alcohol thing should not be increased, that one should be, just go down section by section, say, state your position on each of them, and then maybe what you'll wind up doing at the council meeting is voting after in section by section. Section 3-4, yes or no? 3-5, yes or no? I don't know how you're going to do it, you'll probably wind up doing a good bit of omnibus, but I don't see myself as being anything more than just regurgitating where people...
We'd have something in front of us, concrete, that we could look at, and Milton, did you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I was going to make the following suggestion. We do have something in concrete, and if you actually read it and look at it, it's not that complicated, so I suspect what we're going to end up doing is just basically starting where we are now, a week. And I think it's good to go ahead and send it to another committee, and let people who want to make further amendments and that sort of thing, you know, we can go ahead and spend some time with this and try to turn it into some form that we have. But I think there's a majority for what Ms. Pat wants to do, and it'll help to debate if we go ahead on her amendment now. But if people don't want to do that, we don't have to, but I actually do think it would help to go ahead and resolve the issue of the escalator clause and increase fines for that, then we won't, but...
Ms. Pat?
Well, I think it too, that's why I made the motion, but it got withdrawn, so...
All right, well, for the purposes of discussion, then, I'll go ahead and, can I move it, if I move it to the next meeting, then we can go ahead and work on it amended. Okay, so I move that we send it to the next committee meeting, April 26th, for further discussion. That's the way to get it on the floor now, so we can amend it. There's your second.
Second.
You want me to do it again?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Um...
Yes.
Does she recognize me?
Yes.
Okay. I move to amend the motion to delete Sections 1 and the ordinance.
Second.
Yes, Ms. Wyman.
I'm sorry, I was just seconding.
Pardon me. Ms. Tenawith?
I'm going to vote for the motion, even though I don't agree with it. That is, so that, because I intend to bring some things back selectively about underalcoholic liquors, but not those things that refer to consumption by minors, but refer to certain seizures by bar owners that I think are important, especially given the length of time that bars are now open. So I'm going to, I'll vote for it, but I'm letting council, committee members know that I want to bring forth changes, and I'm not going to bring forth the changes on the committee floor tonight, but I will contact committee members with those changes, and I will send them on to the initial drafter of this, which is Steve Holtz.
Ms. Wyman?
Just want to add that, as I stated earlier, I don't support status crimes, but because I alert other council members to the fact that I would be asking for deletion of the increase, or to not increase the issue of Chapter 15 miscellaneous offenses and provisions dealing with the increase for curfew of minors, I will bring that back at a later time, so as not to further confuse council members on the floor.
Kim, is you?
After the motion is voted on, I got a question.
Pardon me?
When the motion is finished, then I have a question.
Okay.
With the escalator clause, I think, I support taking it out, leaving it out. I think Mr. Holtz is right, that setting fines is, to a certain extent, it's not a scientific exercise, it's the kind of thing that you do sort of have to follow your gut feeling, but even your gut feeling is better than an automatic increase. I think it's good for city council to periodically go ahead and review the structure of fines and penalties, and what's appropriate, given the particular circumstances of urban and the challenges that it's facing, and that sort of thing. If you just have an automatic escalator, I think it's too easy for things to get out of whack. So I hope that we will remove the escalator clause and leave it out.
You're, what do you think?
I'm just voicing my support for one of the parts of Mrs. Pat's motion.
Which is to eliminate the escalator?
The escalator clause is the part that automatically raises the fines every year without any action from council, so...
Be able to vote in a moment on Ms. Pat's resolution, or her amendment, and that is to say that she wants to eliminate Section, Chapter 15 and Chapter 1 is Chapter 3.
Sections 1 and 7 of the ordinance, so not of the city code, but the ordinance in front of you, Section 1, is the one that says, all liquor violations go up, the fine for all liquor violations goes up to 280, and Section 7 is the one that Mr. Otto was just speaking to that has automatic escalators. Ordinance, if my motion passes, would be amended to delete Sections 1 and Section 7 of the ordinance, leaving 2 through 6 for people to play with next time.
Well, Ms. Pat, if her motion is accepted and passes, then it takes that controversial aspect out of the consideration entirely at this point, and then, at the meeting, the 26th of April, we can propose our suggestions, our changes. I personally must tell you that I think the following is not wise and not necessary. There's no, if we're talking, if we're talking science here, jumping after, into the, or off the champagne haze is not a science, scientific reaction. So I would, and I'm thinking of maybe something more like 150 would be a good fine, but that's preemptive right now. I guess it's time to call for motion, for approval of Ms. Pat's amendments. All those in favor of Ms. Pat's amendment signify by saying aye. That passes. So they are eliminated right now from consideration, and then, on the 26th of April...
Need to vote again, sir.
The main motion, which is to move it to the next.
The main motion is to bring it back to the council as a committee on 26th, and when you won't have such an unbiased chairman. Why was I saying aye?
Aye.
That passes. Without any further ado, we are adjourned.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I've got a question for the, assistant police chief. I've got a question for the assistant police chief.
Yes, sir.
My question is, when a customer goes into the grocery store, or Piccadilly's or one of those places, and he buys a bottle of wine, or a bottle of whiskey, what have you, right? It has a seal on it. Okay, now, he can carry that in his car, no problem. I mentioned this question with technical reason, right? Now, some people go to these parties, BYOB, bring your own bottle, okay? And so, when they get ready to leave, they hate to leave their good stuff at the people's house. Now, so, here's what I'm asking, right? If before you leave that house, there's no way that the driver or the person riding in the car can get to that bottle, and they put it in the trunk of the car, would they still be written up for illegal transportation on it?
No, and it has nothing to do with the tape, it has to do with being in the trunk and not immediately accessible to the passengers in the car. If you, once you break the seal, it's open, regardless of how you try and seal it back. Once you break the seal, it's open.
Okay.
But if you put it in the trunk of the car, then it's not immediately accessible to the passengers, and that's okay.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Not a problem.
Thank you very much!